Good evening, welcome to the July 23 Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilor Franco who is on her way, she notified that she was running a few minutes late. Calendar and Communications, Councilor Baumgartner?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Parker?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Heed?
Been busy. I went to the SCWA meeting, the hearing, last week, and I sent some notes on to John Burt. Received communications from Carl Perizzati about a mooring in Noink. Also received a document from Larry Dunn on the Conservation Commission on how to guide a successful plastic ban in your community. I think I emailed it on to everyone. Also spoke to Stephen Mansfield. We have a vacancy on the Ledge Light Health District, so he's the director over there, and I just needed to get a little guidance on what they're looking for, like who would be an ideal candidate. So, aside from that, also received a letter from Eleanor Fisher, supporting the plastic ban, and asking us to apply the paper bag fee. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilor Obray?
I want to see if we got one.
Go for it.
We went to a meeting at the Municipal Building last week for JU- JULOS is what we call it. It's implementing projects for the region, and it was a very informative meeting. There was a lot of input. This is so that we can come up with a way to join both sides of the river in projects and moving forward. And they have just about finished their survey in order to be able to give the group a report. This will be on employment, housing, and other needs, transportation, et cetera. So, it's been pretty informative.
Councilor Atwater?
I attended a SCARA meeting a week ago, and they're working still. I guess there's a lot more planning on the organic waste recycling than we thought. They are proceeding with that. I went to a seat board meeting last Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and had a tour of their facilities. Quite impressed with the number of buses they have and the size of the operation. It's a big business. I attended the Stonington nonprofit meeting last Thursday morning. It's a group of nonprofits in Stonington that meet once a month and just plan and talk about what they're doing, and I think it's something that I'd like to see done in Groton, so I'm working with them to get more information. And I went to the Coffee with a Cop a week or two ago. It's a bakery. It's quite interesting that most of the talk was from the merchants about the parking situation, and Mystic, obviously. But I thought it was kind of ironic that where I lived in Maine, they had the same issue, and the biggest problem is that most of the employees are the ones that are taking up the parking spaces. So, it's a challenge, but I guess it's being worked on, so.
Thank you. Councilor Schmidt?
No report.
Councilor Zepary?
No report.
Can I come back to Councilor Franco?
Yes, I attended the Trails Committee and Mutification Committee. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. I was at the same meeting that Councilor Obray was at for the JULOS implementation. It was a workshop, and it was very good. Lots of people from the community were there. One of our community members is supporting a plan for mass transit, in particular using trains that would run on the current lines and expanding shoreline east, and I just heard back from someone at the state level today, so I will forward that email to you later. We had a memo from Representative Conley today saying that the bill to facilitate the transfer of the property for the submarine monument passed the House and the Senate. So now it's up to the manager to do the negotiating with DOT and hopefully secure the property so we can go ahead with that. I had a couple of blight complaints, and I sent them back to town staff, and town staff is working on both of them. And I'll go to the manager because Councilor Atwater mentioned parking. You've been working on parking with people in Stonington as well, correct?
Yes, so we just had another meeting yesterday with several people from Planning Department, Paige, John, and Deb. Some of our police officers, including Chief Pizarro, Stonington Police, Stonington Planning, Mystic Chamber, maybe I'm missing a couple. So, we had a pretty large group. We've been working on ideas on it. So, doing some investigation on some ideas before the next meeting we'll meet again in about a month.
Very good, thank you. Approval of minutes. Councilor Baumgartner?
I'll make a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes of July 9, 2019. So moved?
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Obray. There is one error that I spotted on page three. The fourth paragraph where it's discussing the League of Women Voters, it has it as the Women League of Voters. So that just needs to be adjusted, so it reads "from the League of Women Voters." Anyone else?
I-
Councilor Franco?
On, it's 5A, the Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance. It wasn't mentioned in here that I would like to see the styrofoam takeout containers possibly explored.
So you're looking at, on page seven then, you would like something added in the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down?
Sure.
And could you repeat it again for the person who's going to adjust the minutes, please?
That I had notated that I would like to see the styrofoam takeout containers-
Thank you.
-explored.
You mean page eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's page nine of the packet, page seven of the minutes. It's confusing because everything's paginated. It's page nine of the packet, okay. Councilor Parker?
Can we spell Councilor Heed's name right? It's Heed on page eight, but it's page six of the actual-
Page eight. What paragraph, please?
The page in at 5B under 29, 282. It's the very second, it's actually the last sentence. Councilor Heed noted.
Okay, I see it. Last sentence on page eight, correction to Councilor Heed's name. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes as the corrections, including the corrections, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are at nine councilors, passively unanimously. Turn around to new business, and this will be on page 10. 2019-468 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification Van Drivers. Councilor Parker, please.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to modify the current part-seasonal time pay plan for van drivers effective August 18. I so move.
Second. Moved by Parker and seconded by Franco. Is there a discussion on this, or, oh, Mr. Berry and Ms. Riley are here, so they will give us a brief background. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation, and to my right is Mary Jo Riley, who's the supervisor of the Senior Center. So, we are here this evening to request a modification to the part-time seasonal pay plan specifically to van drivers. We've had, in the past couple of years, we've had a difficult time filling van driver positions. They've remained open for extended periods of time. We've gone through the application process, or the interview process, excuse me, offered a driver a position, told him what he paid, and they've said, "Thanks, but no thanks." So, what we did last year is we actually surveyed what other communities are paying, both starting and the max. So, we looked at the range of what drivers were getting, and we saw, in most cases, that we were considerably lower in what we were paying our van drivers, which we believe is the reason that we're having a difficult time filling positions. There's a lot of opportunities for drivers out there, both in the municipal setting and also commercial drivers, and so we're here to propose a revised pay plan that will allow us to be a little bit more competitive when it comes to hiring van drivers. And we've calculated that the approximate cost to the department would be about $2,300 if we started this as of August 18.
Okay. Ms. Riley, did you want to add anything?
Only that we've had to cancel transportation for medical appointments, which for people that don't drive is really, you know, what keeps them living at home. And we've had staff that have had to pick up the slack and use a town vehicle to take people when they can, and it's more cost prohibitive to have staff, full-time staff covering what the drivers do.
Thank you. Do councilors have questions? Councilor Zepary?
How many, how many drivers do you have?
I have-
We have seven drivers.
And how many people do they transport on a daily basis?
We could transport to and from the center 30 people in three different runs. Then we transport to medical appointment, we can only do three, because you picture if somebody's in Noink and somebody's over by the subbase, to get them to medical appointments, the drivers can put up to 100 miles a day on a vehicle. We transport to Groton Doctors, to Westerly, and to New London Waterford. Then we also provide shopping, so they can go to the grocery store and department stores locally.
And just to be clear, that's not seven drivers every single day. That's cumulatively seven drivers, and depending on the day, there's two to three to four drivers.
Yeah.
And you say this upgrade in pay is going to amount to $2,300. Am I correct?
Yes, that's what we have-
Is that for an annual cost?
That would be for the balance of this fiscal year, and we're going to be able to cover those costs two different ways. One, we currently have a position that just opened, a driver who has been with us for quite a while will not be driving anymore. So, a new hire would start in lower than what that driver would have been paid, and we're also, we're informed that there's a driver that's been driving with us for a number of years, is retiring in January. So those costs would be covered by those two situations for this fiscal year.
But then you want to fill those positions if you need. Presumably, you have this number of drivers because you need this number of drivers.
Right. Yes, we would be filling those positions, but they would also be starting at a lower rate than what the current drivers that we have that are leaving are getting paid high, are getting paid more than what a new driver would. So there's going to be a cost savings by replacing those two drivers.
Why do we take people to Westerly?
For medical appointments. We only do it one morning a week, and it's because we have a significant number of people in town that have physicians in Westerly.
Are there criteria that must be met before you're entitled to be driven by these people?
To take our transportation?
Yeah.
People have to be independent. If they're not independent, they can bring in aid, and they have to be residents of Groton.
What about economic requirements?
No, it's really more based on their ability to drive or their lack of ability to drive.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilor Heed?
Yes, for the van driver PSL, the starting pay right now is $10.95, and you're proposing to make the starting pay $14.95, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, then that puts us at the highest paid scale except for Norwich was, which is at $1,864. I would think $14, which is equal to Waterford, might make more sense.
Part of the problem is that towns like Waterford have full-time drivers with benefits, which isn't reflected in here in what we were looking, when we were looking at the pay scales. New London had full-time drivers, Norwich has full-time drivers, we only have 19-hour a week drivers, and then we have three regular part-time which work 24 to 30 hours.
All right. Well, that goes into my next question, which is, does this include any benefits? So, I guess not.
And what we really are lacking is people, our 19-hour-a-week drivers don't necessarily drive 19 hours a week. They fill in when we need them in the spots where we have empty driving time. So, what's happening next month is we have two regular part-time drivers going on vacation. We don't have a 19-hour-a-week or a per diem driver who's available to fill in, because most of our part-time drivers that are per diem also have other jobs. So, we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard place, that yes, we can hire maybe three more people that are per diem, but they will get hours because if somebody calls in sick or somebody is going on vacation, we just need people to fill in.
Councilor Franco?
When you put the ad out, do you have a lot of respondents for the passenger, the passenger, is it a passenger driver's license, a PSL?
PSL.
Do you have a high turnout?
It depends. I mean, you can post it one week and get three or four, and then post it the next week and get nothing, so it's, it fluctuates.
Actually, two weeks ago, somebody contacted me asking me how, if I had any advice of what they could find somebody that could drive with a CDL and had the passenger driver's license, and they worked at a hotel, and they were desperate to find somebody. And so, they're having a very hard time finding people as well, so-
Right.
I would, if they're, my thought is if it's that hard to find somebody, I think the pay would compensate.
But it just puts us in a more competitive position.
Right, I agree.
Councilor Schmidt and then Obray?
I just feel that this is a very important position for somebody to fill, and in addition to being qualified as a driver, they have to be someone who is able to work with people, take care of them, and be thoughtful, be kind. So we're asking a little bit more than just to drive, we're asking them to be compassionate as well, and I think that they deserve to have this kind of an increase.
Our drivers have found people having strokes, found people falling on the floor, so they have, we do a little bit of training, aside from CPR and first aid, we do some training so that they know that, what to do in case of an emergency, how to handle people when they're upset, so they get a lot of that training also.
Councilor Obray?
Do you have more requests in the summer than in winter for drive, for appointments?
No. It seems like everybody will have their surgeries in the winter so they can be home in the summertime and enjoy themselves, but it really kind of has been steady all year long. We used to be slower in the summer, but not in the past five years.
Are you familiar with a program that the bus company has for senior citizens for, they have a special program that they'll provide rides to the doctor and et cetera? Are you familiar with that at all?
Do you know the name of the program?
I'll find out. Actually, it was at your senior event that I found out about it, you know, when you did the-
Oh, the Eastern Connecticut Transportation Consortium?
Yeah.
We actually subcontract them to do medical rides for our grant program.
Well, they told me that they had a significantly lower cost for seniors if they needed to, and they would pick them up, they would help them into the car, you know, yada, yada, yada. I don't know, the girl that was there that day was very positive about it, but said it didn't get out to many people, that that service was available.
But it still is, there's a cost to senior, it's, they utilize taxi services, they subcontract taxi services, and so it's called a voucher program, and you pay a certain amount for the vouchers, and you get a certain amount off your taxi ride, but it still can be, for some people that live in senior housing, too expensive for them to get to medical appointments and where they need to go.
Okay. Have you, another thing that I would just suggest is, having been one myself in the past, the bus drivers, the times that you need them, they're not driving buses, so you might be able to work with some of the bus drivers.
We have some retired school bus drivers, but we've tried the bus drivers, and our drivers start at 7:30 in the morning, they leave the building at 8:00 to do starting of pickups where the school bus drivers are still driving.
Yeah.
Our all-day driver does not return until 3:30, 4 o'clock, so they're out there from 8:00 until 4:00.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Are there any other questions on this particular item?
As I understand it, there's no charge for this service, is that right?
We do charge $2 run trip for medical and for shopping. More to make sure people don't, just at the last minute, say, "Oh, the doctor changed the appointment," or "I don't need to go shopping today," because we don't want drivers out driving around when people cancel, and that seems to work. We've explored the idea of like a membership fee for transportation where they pay a one-time fee annually of like $25, just again to commit them to the program.
Do you include dialysis in the program?
For the medical, yep, three times a week, and we have people where we take them one way, because they don't fit into our schedule, but we can either take them or pick them up after dialysis.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no further questions, we'll vote on 2019-468 Part-Time Seasonal Pay Plan Modification Van Drivers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are on to 5B, 2019-437-1 Mystic Way Resubdivision Phase 3 Acceptance of Public Improvements. This is on page 12, and we are on Councilor Franco, please.
To recommend a resolution accepting the Mystic Way resubdivision Phase 3 Public Improvements for Regatta Circle and Knott's Landing Circle. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco and seconded by Parker. Good evening.
Mayor?
Yes.
Since I live on the planning circle, I would excuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. I don't know if it's necessary, but thank you for, thank you for disclosing.
I understand, but I just thought I would make sure that-
Mr. Ryan?
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, and with me is Deb Jones, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Original subdivision of this property was approved back in 2004. A few years after that, something happened with the housing markets, so things slowed down a little bit. Over the past couple of years, the developer has been building out the rest of the property to all the standards of what was required within the subdivision plan. It's been reviewed and accepted by our Town Engineering Department, recommended by Public Works that we accept these public improvements, and that's why we're bringing this before you tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions about this item? Councilor Zepary?
Are these private roads within the development?
No, they're not. They will be public roads as soon as you accept them and refile the deeds.
Is the developer building the roads, or is the town building the roads?
The developer has built the roads.
They're completely built out.
Thank you. Councilor Baumgartner?
What did the improvements include?
In this case, it's just the roads, the cul-de-sacs, but other improvements that you've already accepted include open space, a significant piece on Eccleston Brook. So, just for public clarification, then, so if someone builds a road, it doesn't necessarily become a public road, they have to jump through certain hoops and meet certain criteria before the town will take on the responsibility of managing that road and maintaining that road, correct? That's right. Okay, so that includes width and structure of the road and-
Drainage.
Drainage, all these sorts of things that go with being a public road.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilor Obray?
I assume, I can't remember from the last time I was up there, but sidewalks also?
That's correct.
Pardon me?
That's right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Heed?
On your reference, what happens if we were not to accept the roads?
Then the folks living on this road would be out of compliance with zoning. In order to have an approved lot, you have to have access on a town-approved road. I don't think we've ever had that situation before.
Especially when they've met all of the standards of what they're supposed to do.
I would assume it would be a lawsuit if-
Councilor Atwater?
If the town says this is what you have to do, and they did it, and now you're going to approve it, I think there would be grounds for a lawsuit. That's just my opinion on how it's a council.
That's truly data.
Any other questions or comments on this particular item? Seeing none, we will vote on 2019-437 Mystic Way Resubdivision Phase 3 Acceptance of Public Improvements. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Are you abstaining?
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstention, and that is Councilor Atwater. Thank you. We are on to 5C, which is 2019-282 Single Use Plastic Reduction Ordinance on page 18, and I believe we are on Councilor Heed.
Right, so the recommended action is the Town Council will give staff feedback on the proposed draft ordinance, but there is no motion.
Correct, thank you. How do you want to do this, do-
So, a very quick overview, since the last time we've been before the council, we've worked with the Conservation Commission, with members of the public. We do have a, staff and Conservation Commission are planning a public informational forum on single-use plastics for September 26, 2019, at the Groton Senior Center, so we'd love it if people came out, the council and others, we're going to go over a number of topics dealing with single-use plastics. Things that have changed in the ordinance since the last time we spoke to you, I believe also since that time the state passed a law banning plastic bags in the near future. We defined polystyrene cups and extended the ban to these products in this current draft. We've defined that the enforcement officer is our blight or zoning enforcement officer. Generally, internal policy on enforcement is that it can be self-regulating and usually complaint-driven. We inserted language that allows single-use plastic straws on prepackaged drinks like juice boxes, we're not going to say people can't sell juice boxes with plastic straws attached. We also inserted language that exempts the ban of single-use plastic straws at medical and dental facilities. There are already an exemption in the ordinance, in the draft ordinance, for anyone with disabilities or any other need that would desire to have a plastic straw. We have inserted language that allows for the retail sale of plastic straws and styrofoam cups and prepackaged bulk commodities, so we don't want people thinking that you can't go to a store and buy these things in bulk, but it's looking at, you know, restaurant and other types of uses. We inserted language that further defines an offense for enforcement purposes, just to clarify that, as well as removing plastic cutlery from the ban, as there does not appear to be any cost-effective measure on that. I think part of the reason we also removed it is because some of us are having trouble saying "cutlery" or "cutlery," so just, so.
I had a question, and I just want, it's more of a request for when we are proceeding with the September 26 informational forum, just to be sure that we reach out to the schools, including, not only Groton Public Schools, but the Vocational School and Marine Science School, Sacred Heart School. If those will be subject to the ordinance, it's important that they are there and they can ask questions and perhaps express concerns if they have any, so if you could make a note of that, please, in case I forget. Anyone have questions? Councilors Zepary, Councilor Parker, Councilor Zepary, Parker, then Atwater.
Why are we allowing, you know, we're doing this ordinance in hopes of decreasing the stream of the quantity of plastic material in the waste stream, and yet we expressly exempt the bulk packaging sale of bulk styrofoam cups and plastic straws. Why are we exempting them? Doesn't that add to the stream of plastics in the waste?
It certainly does. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, so I think what we're looking at is this is a first step in bringing awareness to this type of issue. If people stop buying plastic cups and straws and styrofoam in supermarkets or department stores or wherever they would buy them, that certainly helps. The council certainly could take that step, but that's not the direction that we've received. So, again, we staff are trying to respond to write an ordinance, getting direction from nine council members, so what the council comes up and tells us to draft, we will, we're happy to draft that ordinance.
I heard the expression, "How do you eat bologna?" And it's at one slice at a time. I'd like not to see so much bologna here. We really are facing a crisis with the- We really are facing a crisis with the accumulations of plastics in the waste stream, and we should not be making exemptions when there are alternative materials to be used. And to sell styrofoam and plastic straws in bulk, I think, is counterproductive to what we're trying to do. So my own feeling is to send back to the committee that wrote this, is to ditch that particular clause. I have some other things. The definitions of plastic stirs and plastic bags. A plastic stir is a device devised from petroleum or a biologically-based device. These are things that are being prohibited. But a biologically-based device is biodegradable, and if something is biodegradable, it should be permitted. And I noticed that the bags that you prohibit include bags that are made from corn. And compostable materials are also banned. And these are recyclable materials that can be turned into, can be resorbed into the environment harmlessly. And I think we should not ban those, but encourage them as alternatives to the plastic, which is so harmful to us at this time. So I would like to see that particular definition reconsidered. By that, I'm referring to also page 21, item 10-194C. We are allowing, we also want to allow plastic laundry bags, plastic bags that the cleaners put over a suit on a hook, so it's open on both ends. And that's supposedly allowable, but we already have an alternative to that. Those used to be made of paper, and they can be made of paper again and serve the same purpose, and we won't have that part of the plastic in the waste stream either. And so I would like to see those, that portion of the legislation or the ordinance revised. There is, exceptions on page, on this thing, it's 22, and it's 10-195. We're supposedly going to allow people who sell nuts and grains and candy or small hardware items to dispose, to sell them in plastic bags. And again, I would ask, are there alternatives? Are there reasonable alternatives so that we can eliminate this part of the plastic in our stream? And I think that there are. Allowing dentists and doctors to use plastic straws when we're not allowing other people seems silly. If you need a straw, a paper straw works, and it works in the system. Why do we have to say, "Okay, because they're doctors or because they're disabled, they can have plastic"? That's arbitrary, because once again, we have alternatives that we can use and eliminate that part of the plastics into the stream. Oh, and finally, in the penalties, it says the town may not renew any municipally issued license to any business establishment or food service establishment found to be in violation of this ordinance. Wouldn't it be better to say that they can, once that they're in compliance with the ordinance and they paid their fine, they can then get their license renewed? By the sound of this, it seems rather harsh that they lose their license indefinitely. So I think that should be worded a little better. I think I've said enough. Probably have more to say, but bored everybody long enough with my harangue.
Just before we go on, I just want to assure Mr. Reiner and Ms. Jones that I'm certain Counselors of Perry did not refer to you two as doling out baloney, so we will go on to Counselor Parker.
Deb did.
You mayor mentioned businesses. Are we also going to talk to daycare centers, because they may have straws for, because, but then on the same token, they're not licensed through the town, they're licensed through the state?
If they're more than six students, then they are, they are approved through the town, they have a site plan approval.
Okay. So Mike, and I know everyone knows how I feel about this. I don't think we can ban people from buying bulk in the stores. I don't see how we're going to tell a store not to sell something. Excuse me. Especially if a person wants to buy it. So it goes back to the consumer. We're trying to train people that way, but we also have to remember, people are going to use straws at their home. If the alternatives are not being sold in the store, they will buy the plastic in the store. So unless they find something online. And I did have concerns about 10-196E. It does sound a little harsh. If it could be reworded, it almost doesn't sound business-friendly, and we're trying to get businesses in here. I don't want to deter any businesses. And I had exemptions about medical and people using straws, plastic straws. They may not be able to use a metal straw. Or in some cases, people may be allergic to certain materials, so I, it's a toss-up. And I get where you're going about medical issues and doctors especially or dentists, but is that going to be on the businesses to make sure that they pay for the stuff, to make sure they have it in there, and then in turn it goes back to the consumer being charged additional for having a straw? I just want us to find a balance and make sure we're doing, dotting our i's, dotting our t's. I don't want us to go too harsh, because then we go too harsh and people are going to pull away. And we need to ease them gently into this, and I believe we can go back and rewrite it if we need to, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Atwater, Baumgartner, Heath, and Franco.
Couple of questions I have.
Page one, I guess, about the, under business establishments you have that exempt our sales by nonprofit organizations. Further over, there's something that says, I can't remember where I saw it, and I noticed that they were exempt, that they gave out produce, supplies or something to hardship, I guess, to, no, I can't find it, I'm sorry.
Page 22, section 10-195, section C, number four. I had that one circled as well.
Yeah, I guess those number four bags used by nonprofits are exempt. But I guess I'm thinking, if I'm a charity and I'm giving out charitable items, I can understand that, but if I'm a charity that is selling things, I think they should fall into the same category as a regular business. I don't, and the other question I have is, I know they make recyclable cutlery, and I just am curious, when you say that it's not easily affordable or accessible, is there, have you looked into this, or, I mean, I don't know. The one example I have, John, is that the Kowlyx Ice Cream Place over in Waterford uses one, and I would assume that that's a small establishment, that it couldn't be that expensive. So I don't, I'm just asking that that be looked into.
Okay, Counselor Baumgartner, Heath, and Franco.
A few recommendations. One, I think it goes without saying that to be effective in banning, you know, polystyrenes, we should also include banning it not just for the cups, but also carryout containers. There are many establishments in the region, many restaurants I've gone to, that have offered takeout containers in the form of, you know, paper, paper-like products. So I think that's certainly a plausible alternative that I think should be explored. And also, plastic cups, I mean, there are even plenty of fast-food restaurants that offer their smaller-sized cups and paper cups as opposed to plastic cups. And I think, you know, while the ordinance takes a big step in banning the plastic straws, I think it can go a little further in maybe extending it to the, to those cups as well. And also, kind of exploring biodegradable plastics, you know, in the long term, I think we ought to explore, you know, supporting a ban on really all plastics, so that would include the cutlery. So as technology improves and the cost of, you know, the cost of procuring these, the plastic cutlery for these businesses will, over time, you know, lower, so it'll be more, less cost prohibitive from going that route. And lastly, I would like to include, I think it's section, it's on the alternative, so like sugarcane.
Where are you at, Counselor?
I think section 10. There we go. Section 10-194, section D. So, let's see. Nothing in this section shall preclude a business establishment or food service establishment from using or making nonplastic alternative straw, stirs, or cups made from nonplastic materials, including, but not limited to, paper, pasta, sugarcane, wood, or bamboo available to customers. I would include hemp. Their, this past year, the state legislature legalized hemp and created a pilot program where farmers are now researching its use along with the University of Connecticut, and it's a product that is highly durable and could be really an alternative for a lot of farmers who are looking to maybe get out of agriculture, because, you know, it's a lot of work and, you know, a tremendous amount of work, and, you know, they may not be compensated for that work, and hemp provides that opportunity for them to continue on the life of their farm or their land. And potentially, it's something that could be explored in Groton, too. I know South Windsor has explored, or has allowed many of their, you know, their farms and land to be converted to, you know, hemp fields. And so I think explicitly calling that out as a reusable material or a material that will be used in the future, since a couple of years ago, that wouldn't have been the case.
Counselor Heath.
I wouldn't even have considered hemp as a possibility, but I guess if George Washington used it, you know, so can we, for products. I have no objection to that, but I just want to just hang back a little bit. I'm thinking the right approach for this still needs to be kind of ease in with a moderate kind of measured approach to eat the elephant one bite at a time, or one slice of baloney, however you want to do it, and leave certain things to future councils and create more momentum for the state to follow. So I just want to be on record as saying I thought that this draft was excellent, it was, achieved everything I thought we should achieve. But I do have a couple of comments. When it comes to sales by charities, I kind of agree, I forget who mentioned that, but if you're donating something, that's fine, but if you're selling things, then you're, you should be part of the, you should be held to account. I would also say, on the biodegradable items, I think you have to read the fine print, because every time I see a biodegradable item, it requires certain kinds of composting facilities to make it actually be biodegradable, and sometimes there's even a lot of plastic leftover, and that's also true for corn-based. It's not as non-toxic as you think it is. So I think those were all the notes that I had, but I very much like this draft as written.
Counselor Franco.
I also agree that this is, these are small steps, and it's a start, and we can grow as residents, become more accepting and willing to make changes. I had read this, and I had made some notes, and I actually have some questions that maybe you could answer. So styrofoam cups would be part of the ban, and how many businesses would this affect, do you believe?
Most of them.
Most that probably serve to-go cups. I think, you know, many, some coffee shops, but others have paper cups. It's hard to say. Depending on the amount of outreach and education and, you know, polling every single business, we don't have the staff to go and do that. So I mean, as this grows, things were being asked. I'm a little concerned about the manpower that could be required to do and compile some of the data that people are looking for. What initially started off as a plastic bag ordinance, again, it's growing, and I think it's all for a very good cause. I mean, plastics and microplastics in our environment is a real concern to all of society.
Okay. So I also, in here, I think just my personal perspective is cups, if you're going to replace them with paper, I mean, paper also has, generates a lot of pollution and issues, and I know it's maybe more biodegradable, but it also creates stone issues as well. And as I've also read an article that was sent to me regarding paper cups, they're also lined with plastic as well, so the cups really concern me still. But I would like to see the styrofoam takeout containers, because I have actually seen many different options instead of styrofoam containers that I think are made in bulk that businesses probably can get extremely, at really good prices instead of styrofoam. Also, the plastic bag ban would also, just clarifying, because what I'm reading here, it would be clothing, retail as well. So if I went to like TJ Maxx and I bought a bunch of clothes, I don't, they wouldn't give me a bag to take them home in, correct?
Correct.
Not a plastic bag.
And that's something I see like a lot of stores, not just grocery stores, but a lot of other stores. So we're, this is a big change for people who are going to have to start bringing bags everywhere they shop, not just the grocery store. On page 20, the reusable bag, once again, has quite a definition here of what they're allowed to sell. And it goes into details of how, we've discussed this before, about the thickness, how it's the non-woven textile, primarily cloth. I mean, are we getting too in the weeds here? That's to require stores, if they're going to provide bags, to make it this type exactly like this?
This is a minimum type, and this is kind of an industry standard. We've done some research on different bag types, and this seems to be a minimum design of something that'll actually withstand a little bit of abuse.
All right. And this is only for the ones that are going to be sold at stores? Is that what you're saying?
I think we're defining the reusable bag as well as, yes, so then, you know, under prohibited acts, making reusable bags available, it's saying nothing in here would prohibit that, so we wanted to make sure we had a definition of what that reusable bag was, so that people aren't saying, "Oh, you can just reuse your plastic bags."
So if they don't, if they're selling bags and they don't conform to exactly this, they would be?
In violation.
In violation.
They can be in excess of that, but that would be the minimum.
Or they may choose just not to sell bags.
Exactly.
I also have, on section 10-195, section C, number four, it states here, "Bags used by nonprofit or other organizations to distribute food, grocery products, clothing, or other household items." They're basically... They're basically, is that not conflicting? This is saying that this chapter does not apply to these type of places. So it doesn't just say nonprofits, it says other organizations. I think that's a conflicting statement because anybody could say, well, I'm another organization.
Yeah, I think it's to give away food as opposed to sell.
It just says distribute, and I think that's not a clarification of exactly what they're doing. So also, on page 22, section 10-196, number E, where this has been brought up before, "The town may not renew any municipally-issued license to any business establishment or food service establishment found to be in violation of this ordinance." So if people are in noncompliance, are we basically going to tell them, you can't do business in Groton and you'll have to leave?
That's an option that you can leave in or take out of the ordinance.
You'll fine them.
I know, but that's, fining them is in number C. E is saying, we will not reissue a license for them, which is basically saying, we will not allow you to do business here in Groton if you do not, if you are not in compliance with this, at your renewal time. I find that sort of harsh.
Actually, we don't license food, Department of Health would, so we may have actually taken that from Stonington's draft.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have, I will wait until Counselor O'Bree speaks, and then we have Counselor Heed that also wishes to speak.
Well, I think it's always, this is much more complicated than it needs to be. You know, I know I'm old, I grew up when it was paper bags for everything, and you know, we managed just fine. And when you say a store, you're going to have to take a bag to a store, no, you're not. Bags will, stores will get paper bags that have their name on it, and it'll be very nice, and it'll be just like it used to be. Might be a little bit more bulky, but I think we just need to say that we're going to ban plastics and have a list of things that we're doing and not say, well, this group can do this and this group can do this. That's, that's not what we're after, I don't think. We're trying to get rid of plastic. You don't make all these exceptions, because if you have an exception, somebody will find out how to use it. So, you know, I, I can't think of a thing that we couldn't manage back when I was younger in a paper bag. My dad ran a grocery store. Everything that went out of that store went out in a plastic bag. The meats went out wrapped in paper. I mean, everything was paper, and everybody seemed to survive. And I think we need to take it back to that simple approach. It's paper, not plastic, no exceptions. Here it is, we want to save this world. That's my feeling about it. My only question would be, is, has anybody asked any questions about availability of the products that we're asking them to go to? Paper bags, large, small, wrapping paper, et cetera. Is it, is it available? Are we, that's the only hardship I worry about putting on a business. If they can't get what they need, then we can't tell them they got to use it. So I think that's one thing that has to be looked into. But I think that we should keep it simple, make it known that Groton doesn't want plastic anymore. And I think we'll all live through it. And I think the less we have for exceptions, the easier it'll be. I lived through it, look at me, I never missed a meal, I never dropped a bag.
I'm going to take my turn now.
Okay.
I, I thank you very much for working on this. A lot of effort went into it. I think it's a good start. I think it's a good place to begin our public education and hear from what the community thinks. And at that point, when we get the feedback from the businesses and the citizens who will be living with this, then if necessary, we can step back and we can add the changes in. I would like to concur with Counselor Baumgartner and Franco on their opinions on the Styrofoam containers, in particular, the clamshell containers. I would love to see those go away. I'm in favor of the Styrofoam cups going away. As far as I know, you can't recycle Styrofoam. You can recycle paper, paper biodegrades. So I would much rather see people using paper cups than any Styrofoam or plastic cups. I think, and I mentioned schools earlier, so I think that's good. But again, I think this is a good start, and I think, I think we should move forward with it. And we can adapt as we hear feedback from the community, in particular, the businesses. I know that's a concern for everybody here. We have Counselor Heed, and then Counselors Zepary wishes to speak again.
Just a quick note, well, two things, I guess, on the Styrofoam containers, like the clamshells. From what I understand is there are challenges for certain establishments for their food. So for example, I've been talking to the owner of, what's the restaurant?
Mignana?
Mignana, yes. And he's been experimenting with several different containers, but not every container works. So that's where I think, I would love to go in that direction as well. But I think we just need to start small and work our way in that direction. In terms of section 10-196, letter E, I think what Counselor Franco was getting at was suggesting that we revise that to say something to the effect of until, you know, the violation has been corrected. And that's all.
And then, has everyone spoken on this? So if we can go back to Counselors Zepary.
Well, back to eating bologna one slice at a time. I fully agree with what Counselor O'Bree has said. God's got to, I'm going to pay for this in hell, I'm sure. I think you, we can't really fumble around with this thing. We can't say one group is exempt and another. And those who want to go into this slowly are not appreciating the fact that we're a day late and a dollar short already. The plastic in the waste stream has filled an area in the Pacific Ocean that would be equivalent to the size of Texas. We are destroying species of wildlife in the ocean with our waste. We have to change the way we do things, and we can't just say, oh, well, we've got lots of time. We can do a little bit now and a little bit later, and a little bit later after that. We have to reverse this right away because we've reached a crisis proportion of this, of this problem of plastic waste. And we should be responding to it as it is a crisis. I think that it would be better if the federal government did that, and I think the federal government is trying. I know that Senator Blumenthal is making an effort in that direction. But we have to, it has to begin down here with those of us who are using the plastics at the individual person level. We have to educate those people, and we have to have laws in effect that prohibit the distribution of those plastics. Now, we can't stop people from buying plastic in bulk when they go to the store, but we can stop the store from selling it. And those are things that we should be looking at. If we want to put an end to this problem, we've got to, we really have to dig in and hit it hard right off the bat.
Senator Tom Udall actually is introducing a bill in the United States Senate to, for plastics ban. And then part of it would empower states and municipalities to become even more stringent than what the federal law would allow. So that's encouraging.
Blumenthal is working with that same project.
Counselor Parker?
I hear what you're saying, I hear what everyone's saying, but like I said, this is going to be a reach. So if we're telling the stores not to sell plastic containers, plastic, not containers, forgive me, plastic straws and other plastic, and not use plastic bags, but some of the food is packaged in that. So are we going to tell the distributors not to give it to them? So they have to find an alternative plan for everything. It's not, I know we're trying to go, we have a responsibility, I get that. But we also have to look at what is going to affect all around us because it's going to affect not just the local businesses. In turn, it can affect the business distributors. In turn, it'll affect everyone making stuff. So that means businesses that make the plastic have to change what they're making. Instead of using a plastic thing for frozen food, sometimes it's in containers. What are we going to use to keep the food frozen? It's different things, and I don't know what they were using before I was born, and I know somebody's going to say something. But they're buying, people are buying stuff in bulk in their homes to be able to use it and not keep going to the store again. They're going to use the plastic at their homes because it's easier for them to package stuff in plastic or plastic bags. That's going to start on sandwich bags, that's going to start on the frozen food bags. Where do we say we're not allowing you guys to do that? It's going to trickle down to the people. Would, are we telling them eventually, you guys can't buy that? Basically, what you just said, that they can't sell, you don't want them selling it in the store. But we're telling people they can't buy it? It, that's what it sounds like. I'm just voicing my opinion. I get where everyone's going. We said two things.
I'm sorry. I'm just, just to clarify for the public, what we have in front of us does not say what Counselors Zepary stated and what Counselor Parker fears. So there's nothing banning stores from selling anything. Counselor Franco?
I just want to, like, make it known that I understand what the big picture is. And I know we're trying to do our small part to try and save the planet, and I think plastic is destroying our planet. But also, I mean, you're like, bring the paper back, bring all the paper back. Well, when I was younger, there was paper for everything, but the paper mills highly polluted the environment. And then we stripped forests, and third world countries were like stripping their land so we could get paper and have consumable items. So I'm just saying that there's going to be another issue also by going over to paper. So that's why they're going, that's why the state wants to chart, or I think the grocery stores are going to have to charge for paper bags because that's not a good alternative really either, because you have to get the paper for somewhere, and those paper mills are going to all have to start back up and...
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
They're just going, they were highly polluting the environment.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Counselor Franco has the floor.
So, I don't know, I'm just saying that I completely understand where we're going, but it's a learning, an adjustment, and it's going to be changed for people. So, and I agree with the, we have to do what we can, but I don't want to go too far that there's going to be massive outrage over some of the things we do.
Counselor Baumgartner?
More recently, the plastic, kind of comprehensive plastic ban law at the state level did not place a fee on paper bags, but it did not let, the law didn't eliminate the ability for the municipality to impose a fee on paper bags for, I think, that would be used at grocery stores. And from what I see, that that's also not included in, in the ordinance, and I think something that we ought to consider as well, that I forgot to mention.
Okay, so everyone has spoken at least once, some of us have spoken more than once. Is there any other, so staff was looking for feedback? I think we've given you plenty of feedback. Thank you for listening and taking it all in. Mr. Burt?
I'm not sure there's clear direction though.
No. I think I'm all over the place. Yeah, I think I have clear direction on 10-196, letter E, but that's about it.
10-196, number E.
So we can only make the changes that are clearly of majority? Or, you know, if you're wanting feedback, we could do the more restrictive because that's the way you get feedback, but we're very into feedback.
Ms. Jones?
So we've started talking about this education component we're going to be doing in September. So I think if we can revise this ordinance to reflect what we're hearing there's agreement on, present that as well as a list of items that you are still discussing, and get input on that. Maybe that's the way to go and will help you get a direction.
That would be fine with me. Counselor Franco?
I had made a note asking, I was going to ask in section six of our agenda to review agenda items. For the plastic reduction, when we vote on this, can we vote on the options individually? So we can actually get a clear vote on what people are looking for. Instead of doing it as a big whole group because we may not agree on everything and it might cause an issue. And if we go more individually?
After the education and bring back the options?
Yeah.
With the feedback on each option? Yeah, I think that's fine.
And then we can individually vote on each one whether it should go into an ordinance. And then, because I may like something, we may not agree on the whole thing as it's written.
So just as having lived through charter revision, we would probably need to have a laptop, a screen, and say, take that out, strike that, add this language, but that's further down the road. We could do that after the public input session, and then we could go through and say, "Counselors in favor of Styrofoam ban, counselors in favor of straw ban, counselors in favor of whatever," and then you could be doing it as we're going, and then we could say, yep, that's good, let's go. But that's, that's a little further, we have to get to that place first. So we have to give them something to work with so that they can start organizing the public information session. Did you want to say something else? I'm sorry.
So you'll update the ordinance based on a few things we know there's consensus on. Those will basically be just a list, but not go to the whole trouble of drafting intricate language on each one.
And then I think after that public forum, we can come back to the council and say, all right, here's a draft ordinance, but let's vote on, does everybody want to charge for paper bags? Yes or no? Okay, you get a majority in one way or the other. If it's a yes, all right, the fee can be five cents, 10 cents, what's the, okay, let's move on to the next. So if we kind of pick it apart, item by item, and then we have consensus on that, we can then craft the language and come back to you with a revised draft off of that, getting very topic-specific. Styrofoam cups, clamshell containers, cutlery, you name it.
Very good. I think that's wonderful. Thank you very much. That sounds like that will work very well for all of us and all nine opinions. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are on to item 5D. Let's see where we left off here. Item 5D is 2019-457-1, excess property redevelopment, 529-517, Gold Star Highway. Counselor O'Bree, please, on page 24, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the town manager to sign the option agreement for 519-529, Gold Star Highway. I saw a move, second.
Moved by O'Bree and seconded by Atwater. Mr. Reiner has been joined by Mr. Bronk. Hello.
Hello.
What would you like to tell us?
Well, one, I just noticed a little typo, it's actually 517 and 529.
Oh, the item number's correct, but the motion has 519.
Yes.
Okay. So the resolution should read 517, 529, Gold Star Highway.
Correct.
All right, very good.
All right, good, all right.
I think we're set.
All right, thank you. So we've come to the council on numerous occasions talking about the excess buildings and properties that we either no longer need for public uses or that have been acquired by the town through foreclosures due to unpaid taxes. And tonight, we want to present to you an option agreement on one of those properties specifically at 517 and 529 Gold Star Highway. This is a piece of property that the town acquired through tax foreclosure. We put an RFP out for this property back in 2016, and have been working with a preferred developer pretty much since that time. Since that time, they have been assembling some surrounding properties, working with large-scale developers outside of the region to try to figure out options of what could go on the property. And again, prepared for you tonight, we have that option agreement. This is the second property that we've really kind of moved ahead. Last month, the council approved the letter of intent for us to sell Groton Heights to Thayer Mahan for business development. The property that we're going to be talking about tonight is for multifamily housing development. I think Paige was going to get into this, some of the specific details on the development proposal, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
So I think I'll just try to backfill a little bit of what John was mentioning. So actually, although we issued the RFP in 2016, we've been working on this for a while. Really, we did a lot of the reviews of the proposals and the interviews during 2017. There's a lot of back and forth. And just to give people kind of a perspective on this, we realized this is the first opportunity that the public has to kind of understand where we're at on this. This is town-owned property that is on Gold Star Highway. This is town-owned property that is on Gold Star Highway. It's across the street from Tollgate Road. It's undeveloped property. There is quite a slope. There's ledge at that location. There is a sign up today that's been up for a while. 517 Gold Star Highway is, is 1.7 acres and 529 Gold Star is 10.05 acres. So roughly 12 acres is the town portion of property. Previously acquired through tax foreclosure. Also, so people can get their bearings, our property directly abuts what most people would refer to as the Shetucket Plumbing property. That building actually has recently been demolished. I think the best way to describe the process we've gone through is that the project has matured over the past few years. Although when we issued this RFP, we were thinking there would be a developer who would come in and simply be interested in our two lots. Well, what's happened is that the preferred proposal is from an abutter. And the abutter owns the land that Shetucket Plumbing is located on. That developer is referred to as PJ and A. So not only is his property in play, and that parcel is 2.93 acres. During the maturation of the, of the project, 571 Gold Star Highway has also been acquired. That's 2.91 acres. So in total, we have 17.75 acres between the four parcels. The two private and the two Town of Groton parcels. Now, that was fairly significant for us because the more land aggregate you get, the better project you can get. In addition, one of the parcels has a signalized intersection on Gold Star Highway. So if we're looking for a quality development at this location, having that signalized intersection really gives us an advantage. The preferred developer, PJ and A, they have partnered with two other developers that specialize in residential. Kalinaghi Properties, it's a Connecticut-based firm that has done a lot of high-end housing. They have migrated more into multifamily. They're doing work within New England. They're also trying to branch out more nationally. The second firm, La Cess Development, they're out of Florida. They do work in most states, I believe, east of the Mississippi. And their goal is to really start doing more development in the New England area, including Connecticut. They're finishing up a project right now in Massachusetts. So the three companies coming together are really a partnership. You have PJ and A that has the land acquisition, who's kind of brought things together to a certain level. And then you have the other two residential developers that come in that have more of the expertise and the financing to make all this happen. So the proposal, the proposal's roughly 300 multifamily apartment units or homes. I think most people are aware by now, we have discussed for, really since the market analysis, that there's a significant demand for multifamily housing. In conjunction with that is our 80% commuter statistic. That 80% of the jobs in Groton are held by commuters. That really has to be reversed and we believe that quality housing is part of that equation. And there are people that drive out every day and one of the reasons is particularly younger people, 25 to 35 years old, they may work here, but they're not being provided the housing product that they're really seeking. And I think it's really important to our growing workforce. You know, we can attract them to work here, whether it be Electric Boat, Pfizer, or many of the smaller companies. John just mentioned Thayer Mahan, which is growing even more than I think most people realize. Those younger people are going to look for a certain product. And the housing is going to drive the restaurant, the retail, the shopping, et cetera. Back to the project, the town negotiated a sale price of $228,000 for our land. There's also an option price of $16,000, which has been negotiated. And that is, that's what we're asking you to actually endorse. My last comment is, for years, we have not collected taxes on this property. Our goal is to try and get these properties that do not, they're not on the tax rolls to actually make a contribution. And not a minimal one, but one that actually maximizes their potential. And then also, as I mentioned, the housing product option for our workers.
And building a quality product. We're not just looking for any type of housing. This would be market rate or higher-end housing that they're proposing. And the key word there is proposing. The council approving this option agreement does not preclude or limit the development team. Still has to go through the entirety of the land use approval process before the town's boards and commissions, any state permits, state traffic authority, all of those things are in the future as this moves forward.
So just before we start discussion, that would include any environmental permits and any local zoning regulations?
Correct.
Need to be done in addition to this. Do we have councillors who would like to ask questions? Councillor Franco.
So they're proposing at least 300 apartment units. Do you know if these are going to be planned stages? Or if they're planning on building the whole property at once?
Well, they would be building them one building at a time.
Mm-hmm. But will they build a building and then wait till it's full to move to the next and is, that's what I'm trying to ask.
We, we've not got into a phasing discussion. I think it would be typical to actually have a couple of phases. But they've not actually come up with a delineation on that. I don't think it's realistic to think they're going to build one building, wait, build another building. I think they'll probably split it in half. That would be likely.
In the section two for due diligence, rezoning and land use approvals, it states in here, I'm just going to read it, read it. It is understood by the parties that the entire property is subject to a comprehensive rezoning that is anticipated to be completed and effective on or around October 1st, 2019, that will allow for the project to be permitted as a right with conditions. So what are, what are the conditions?
So the zoning regulations that were just passed, so all the multifamily housing conditions, so those setbacks, landscaping, design requirements, porches, size of the units, the parking requirements, those are all of the conditions that are prescribed within the zoning regulations.
Okay.
When this draft was put together, the zoning regulations still hadn't been approved by the zoning commission.
I see.
So that's why there's some, some language in there of, about if the zoning passes or if it doesn't pass.
Okay, so there's, so there's on section, I believe it's 3B. It's all these requirements that have to be satisfied. And if, let's just say the plan is stalled, and we've discussed this before, like just say that the developers have financial issues or something catastrophic happens to them, that they cannot complete this or it just fails. Does this come back to the town?
So then they would be potentially in breach. I mean, they have ways of mod, of curing that breach of contract. And that's where, you know, seller shall have 30 days following notice to cure the breach. Otherwise, the contract can become null and void.
Okay, so this, we're, this, we just don't want our land to sit there for the next 10 to 20 years because something stalled.
Correct.
And that's one of the issues.
Yeah. And that's why there are certain timelines listed within here that they have to do certain things. There's provision for if the land use process takes longer, they can ask us for additional time. But there are certainly things that, it's a, it requires them to keep in communication with us if something goes wrong through the development process.
Right, because 3B, I guess it also says in the dated section on six, that if 3B of this agreement, the clause requires the title to revert back to the seller at the seller's election, if the building permit for project is not obtained, and that's, so that's basically where it's stating this?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have some kind of timeline as to, because they have the option price that they're putting down and then there's, do you have a timeline for the other option, like the deposit and when everything will be applied?
Can you repeat the question again?
So they're going to put down the option price.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be non-refundable unless certain things happen. And then there's also, it states here that there's a deposit. And then there's also, you know, the purchase price. So like how long is this going to take?
Well, there's an initial 12-month option period. They have the ability to extend that. But we actually have built in an incentive for them to move this project along. If they don't act within, if they take the second option and they don't act within 18 months, there will be no credit on the option value, meaning we keep 100% of it. They have informed us that they are very eager to move forward with the project. So it's important to realize that a lot of the language that gets built into a legal document is more or less a worst-case scenario. They, they're hoping they never even get close to that, but they don't want to cut it too close. They fully intend on exercising the construction within the timeframe that is put within the schedule.
Okay, I hope so too, but just to protect the town on some of these things, that's why I question.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Councillor Schmidt.
I just wondered, is it the design process or the permitting process that could require two years for them to be able to complete whatever they have to complete?
I think the design and permitting process will probably take around 12 months. It could take longer and that's where, if it's taking longer, there are some time periods that can be extended in there.
But they have to have a design before they can get a permit.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so they have to, first, they would be coming, once they have a conceptual design, they'll actually be coming back to the town council to show you that design. Then after that, they'll be submitting their application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If there's inland wetlands or any other commissions they need to go through during that time period also, they'll be concurrently going through that after coming to the council. Once they get their approvals in place, they would then go to the State Traffic Commission. That can take a number of months. So that's where they want, as Paige said, they want to move this forward. But it does take some time getting through the land use approval process, both at the local level and the state level.
Thank you.
We have Councillor Heed, Baumgartner and Obray.
Do you want to write that down or should I yield the floor?
I'll write it down.
Let's see.
Did you forget?
No, I forgot.
Farma, that's farma.
So basically, I just want to, want to dive in for a second. And thank you for like all of your work on this. You're shepherding through, I think, a really beautiful development. But that being said, I just wanted to clarify, this is developers coming in, like a couple of national kind of developers. They have a lot of experience. They've been doing this for a while. They have access to financing.
Yes.
And it's not like a small company that's coming in and maybe they do it, maybe they don't. We'll have to wait and see. So like when I've seen them, these kind of developers do things down in the Washington DC area, they have a very set phasing. And when they get to that point, when they pull the trigger, they just, they go and it's up before you know it. But I just wanted to make sure that this company, they're looking to develop it and not keep it. They're looking to develop it and then sell the facility. Is that right?
That's correct.
To a management company. So it's a different kind of a business model, right?
It is a different type of business model. It might seem counterintuitive for some people where they might want a developer to do the project from A to Z and do everything. That's not really, that's not realistic. If you want a top project, it's important to realize that certain companies specialize in different phases, whether it's aggregating land, whether it's dealing with local clientele for marketing, actually doing the building, actually doing the marketing, or maybe, maybe it's the long-term operations, or maybe it's the financing. Companies have different levels of expertise. So having multiple partners and knowing that long-term, they're hoping to actually sell this someday, they're trying to reach a gold standard. That's a good thing. Rather than someone saying, I'm going to hang on to it forever and cut back on my costs and we'll, we'll figure it out as we go. These are professional people who have a business model that have targeted New England and even more importantly, have targeted Groton as a result of our growth. And they're hoping to capture what they perceive to be as a pretty strong housing demand.
Right. And just one follow-on question because I know that they haven't developed their plan yet. What's the timeline for, I mean, it was kind of suggested, but I didn't really hear an answer. What, what's the timeline on like steps that will see this come to fruition?
This option agreement is somewhat analogous to the letter of intent that was recently done with Thayer Mahan in Groton Heights. And it's the same purpose to a developer. They want to know more than talk, are we willing to actually partner with them? So once we approve the option, they immediately start the expenditure of funds to do the design. In terms of when they're going to finish that, I don't know exactly, but they're waiting for this to be approved so that they can move into that design and enter the permitting process.
All right. No, I understand that. What I'm asking, maybe I'm not being clear. What are the future points where the town council is going to have a, like an interaction with us as it goes along? Or is it, we approve this and we're done?
So after, if this gets approved, so tonight, then it goes to the next town council meeting. It might be two months after that, that the developer will actually bring a more than a conceptual design to you to see and to, you know, kind of give it the thumbs up, give it the okay. If that design is good, then they will do all the really specific engineering. It might take them another six weeks or so and then make that application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm expecting an application submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, probably sometime in November on this, for, to begin the, the land use review process. It could be a little earlier, it could be a little bit later.
Plus, we have the purchase and sale agreement itself, which will happen later. But I think there would be multiple opportunities through the planning and zoning process, through normal conversations to the council and then legal purchase and sale agreement. There will be a few more bites at the apple, since we're talking about food and baloney and elephants.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councillor Baumgartner and then Obray.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, it's my understanding that the town acquired the property through an auction several years ago. Actually, both 571 and 529. Were they purchased jointly or separately?
It was through a tax foreclosure. So the property owners did not pay their taxes and we foreclosed on their taxes.
Okay, so the, the town did not, there wasn't a.
We didn't bid for the property.
Okay, got it. And then, secondly, obviously, right now, it's undeveloped land. So is there, you know, I saw in the plans that there'd be a proposed dog park, but are there any kind of conservation easements that will be included in the property or?
There will be, as part of the design and the requirement for multifamily housing, there will be some open space land, some recreational land for people within the development. And, you know, whether it's a dog park or some other public gathering area on the site, and that's even just an option, a concept that they're putting out there. They weren't necessarily committing to doing a dog park. They've seen that at other properties. That might be something that they do.
So with town-owned property right now, do we have a system in place that kind of monitors land that is held by the town that is undeveloped? So, you know, that right now, obviously, is the biggest barrier to, you know, stormwater runoff going into places it shouldn't, which is just simply it's a natural habitat. So is there any system in place that sort of enforces and inspects land that is undeveloped and kind of tracks whether or not that is land that ultimately should be? and kind of tracks whether or not that is land that ultimately should be, you know, held in the public trust as opposed to being sold to, for development?
Right now, so, properties like this, we review them at a local staff level, and we bring them to the town council. And the town council, back in, I think, 2015 or early '16, directed staff to sell this property, to use it, it's excess, there's no need for it. It was property that was proposed to be developed at one point in time, it didn't go through, it was never approved for development, and the town foreclosed on it via taxes, it wasn't going to be used for conservation or other purposes.
And lastly, on the stormwater runoff issue, are there any kind of additional plans in place to, you know, to eliminate the amount of stormwater runoff that would, again, go to places that they, you know, it shouldn't go to?
So, the zoning regulations require them to build this to a very strict standard for stormwater runoff, using low-impact design techniques, as well as a number of other things, so that the stormwater is handled on the site.
Thank you.
Councilor Obrin, and then DePere.
My question was in reference to what Rachel was speaking about. When it goes to zoning, what do we call it now? Zoning, planning?
The Planning and Zoning Commission.
Planning and Zoning Commission. Isn't it, it's been a while since I've done a project, but isn't it normal to then put a bond on the property for completion of certain things that affect the property, should they default in any way?
If there are public improvements or other required improvements that they have to do, landscaping that they didn't meet, again, that's all through that planning and zoning process to make, we have ways of making developers do what they're going, say they're going to do. Otherwise, we don't give out certificates of occupancy, I mean, there's a number of ways that we have.
Well, I realize that, but I think her hesitation is what we've experienced in the past. Because our market changed, people couldn't finish some of their projects. And, as far back as when La Triomphe was built, and there was a bond that finally the town pulled, got the bond and was able to finish the road, Drosteck Drive. So, I mean, there are ways to put provisions on it, so that you, you know, that if they reach a point that they can't go forward for some reason, our economy changes, et cetera, there's a bond in place to finish the roads, the curbs, the sidewalks, and et cetera, that are needed, to make it look the way that you'd want it to look until it can come back to life.
If there are public improvements, we would certainly have them bond those type of items. As far as the private improvements, there might be some things that we would make them bond if they wanted to occupy some units, but didn't have all the private improvements done. So, there are mechanisms in place, I guess is the short answer.
Do they still call it bonding?
Yeah, bonding, or surety, yeah, something along those lines.
Is that what you were kind of thinking about, Rachel?
Yeah, in making sure that the project goes forward, yeah.
I mean, if there's ever an example of it, when you go up there on Michelle Lane, is it, where they started the condos, what's the name of that street?
Marty Lane.
Marty Lane. I mean, you know, that's a terrible example of something really going bad.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Councilor DePere.
I spoke to you earlier about my concern, and I'm just putting it on the record, I'm going to support you because I trust you, and I have confidence in your abilities and your greater knowledge of these things. However, I am still very concerned that this is a contract for the sale of property, it's an option for the sale of property, and once we've contracted for it, they have a right to buy it for the contracted price. And the only people on that contract are the town of Groton and PJ&amp;ALLC. The developers who have the cash and the, and the financial strength are not a part of this contract, nor is there anything in this contract that I can see that allows us to reclaim the property if they don't go ahead and develop as they said they would. So, I'm concerned about that, and I, and I talked to you before about it, and you said you've got it covered, and I'm going to accept that, and when it comes time to vote, I'm going to say yes, aye. But I want you to know at this point that I'm concerned.
So, number 22, assignability.
This is the last page.
What page number is that?
Thirty-five. Is this page thirty-five in your packet, Councilor DePere?
I'm looking for it, my dear.
Here it is.
I got it here, I just have to be able to turn the page.
Yeah.
I got it. Yep. Yep.
There, it speaks to La Saire Development Corporation, so that the seller has vetted the purchaser's proposed assignee, so once PJ&amp;A has the two abutting properties, or owns one, has an option on the other, they may have closed on the other one, I can't remember.
They own it?
They own both. They, PJ&amp;A is entering into an option agreement with us. La Saire Development with Kalinagi will be taking the property through the development process. This is very common for a developer financer to take property that someone else owns through the development process, and then this option, once they get the approvals, the land use approvals, will be assigned to La Saire Development, and La Saire will be the one that buys the property and develops. Listen, La Sessi.
La Sessi.
Sorry.
Okay. The key word, the thing that bothers me, it says the purchaser may assign this option. It doesn't say the purchaser shall assign this option. It says may, which implies that they don't have to.
Well, La Sessi Development working with Kalinagi will be the developer. I'm sure they have agreements between each other, because it's La Sessi and Kalinagi that is going to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars taking this through the land use process.
I imagine it's going to cost a lot more than that.
Well, not to construct it, just to get the land use approvals, the engineering, the design.
Okay. As I said, I'm going to vote for it, and I just hope you guys have got this well under control.
I think we do. I think the property owner adjacent to the town is bringing the value of the land, the value of aggregating and acquiring the abutting property next to him. Probably is going to get some percentage return on the entire development. That's his value to the project. Whereas the value brought by the other two expert developers is their expertise, their financing, their ability to execute, so that's how this partnership comes together.
Mr. Burt Wondiden?
Just going to reiterate, under Section 1, it says if the purchaser within the option term fails to exercise the options in compliance with the terms, the contract's null and void. So, if they don't do everything they say they're going to do in this, it's null and void, we've got the property.
And again, under the conditions, number three, when you look at the last paragraph right before number four, one of the statements in there, "In the event that the specified deficiencies are not cured as provided in the section, the option period shall terminate, in which case this agreement and the option and sale contemplated herein shall be rendered terminated, null, and void, and no further force in effect." So, there's a number of sections in here where if they don't meet the conditions, options null and void, and we still have the property.
And our attorney helped draft this and review this, and we told him that was a
priority, and he's assured us that we're covered.
Was it Cody?
No, it was Eric Callahan.
Councilor Atwater, you're the only one who hasn't spoken, did you want to address this at all?
I went up to look at the property today, there's no kitchen on the hill.
Oh, thank you.
Took some pictures.
Long story. Okay. Do any of the councilors wish to chime in? I think we've all spoken. All right, seeing none, we'll vote on 2019, 457, excess property redevelopment, 529, 517, Gold Star Highway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Thank you. And we have one more for Mr. Reiner. 2019, 482, reduction in size of Planning and Zoning Commission. This is on page 44 in your packet, and I believe we're, Councilor Atwater?
Forty-four or forty-five?
Forty-four.
We have forty-four.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for September 3rd, 2019, to change the composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission's size from seven regular members to five. I so moved.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Schmidt. All right.
All right. Good evening. This is something that, you know, hindsight's always 2020, a number of months back, we'd asked to extend the time period of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and looking back, we should have asked you to do this at that time also. It's quite difficult recruiting members for our boards and commissions, even our existing planning commission now, we have three vacant alternate spaces. All three of the alternate seats are vacant. When the Planning and Zoning Commission was first contemplated, there was some debate back and forth about what the right number was going to be, and staff strongly feels that that right number is five, not seven. We've gotten concerns from our existing planning commission members of, can we get enough people to sit on our new Planning and Zoning Commission? And, you know, getting the right number of people involved, and, you know, I mean, I'm sure you see it, trying to get people on our boards and commissions is not always an easy thing. So, what we're proposing, you know, the existing commission has five members and three alternates, and both are, you know, Planning and Zoning Commissions have vacancies now. We would propose reducing the number of the Planning and Zoning Commission from seven permanent members to, or regular members to five, and keeping the alternate members at three. Right now, so effective, you know, July 31st, 2019, the Planning Commission is becoming the Planning and Zoning Commission. Technically, the way the ordinance read was after the regulations are adopted, so today, in essence, we have a Planning and Zoning Commission and no longer have a Zoning Commission. We have enough for them to meet with a quorum now at five, and we know sometime over the next month or so, the council would be looking to, or next few months, looking for applicants to apply for those positions, to fill what, in the future, if you move forward with this, would be the three alternate slots.
So, my question, when I first saw this, was then, when we are trying to seat the members of the new Planning and Zoning Commission, are we going to appoint seven, or are we going to appoint five? We're going to appoint five for now and leave?
Well, the plan, the existing Planning Commission members are already all appointed.
Okay.
So, you already have your five regular members.
Okay.
So, if you were to move forward along these lines, if you were to fill the, any additional spaces, we'd be looking to have you fill the three alternate members.
All right. So, at this point, we wouldn't have to do any more appointments or change anything right now?
Alternates? Yes. Well, I mean, you can still move forward with interviewing your alternates, because then, I think the next time that the council or the committee meets might be in August, so theoretically, the earliest you could start appointing would be September anyway.
I'll throw it to Councilor Heed, as you chair the personal appointments, did you want to jump in on this, or maybe I muddied the water, so I apologize for this.
I was going to jump in. When you're, when you're...
Go for it.
Okay. Just, so, we have five members right now in planning.
Yes.
And we'll need to appoint three alternates.
Correct.
So, my question on the size of the committee is, with five, a quorum is three?
Yes.
And with seven, a quorum is four?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a big difference on the quorum, but basically, the existing committees are five and three.
Yes.
Both of them.
Correct.
Okay.
So, in today, you could appoint those three alternate members. You don't have, whether or not, if you knew you were going to act on this ordinance, you could still just appoint any new members as alternates and hold the regular positions until after the public hearing, and then make a determination after that. So, it wouldn't preclude you from still appointing alternates?
Is the thought, because five members have, you know, you get nine opinions, you know, versus five opinions, is that what you're going for, is to keep the meeting shorter, or?
I think there's, a stronger reason is the difficulty in recruiting members to our boards and commissions. That's a fact. I mean, we have some commission members on different commissions that have expressed a desire to move on and resign, but they want to make sure there's someone that's appointed to fill their spot, and they haven't left, because they want to make sure that someone can fill their spot that, you know, can take on that responsibility. And, you know, in the time I've been here, I've seen people get appointed to commissions for two or three months, and then, wow, this is a lot more work than I thought. People that were really energetic and that were really excited about getting on, and then it was just, it's a big time commitment.
No. I'm sorry.
Sorry. Last thing is, we do have several vacancies on boards and commissions right now, and we're pretty desperate for some new members on, WPCA comes to mind, but there are several others, so I can support this.
Mr. Burton and Councilor Baumgartner.
When the mayor, me and John, were in a meeting for the School Reuse Committee, the Planning Commission Chair was there, and he did say he agreed with reducing.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
Have any of the current touring commission members indicated an interest in certain of the new Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
And what was the makeup of that commission, a total of seven regular members?
Five members, three alternates.
Okay.
So, we've had two members from that commission, I believe, actually, apply.
And my other question is on minority appointments. I know in some cases, the minority party can choose or nominate their person, so I wouldn't sure how that would impact the...
This is a general statute commission, correct? So, it is, it is bound then by minority party representation, I believe? Is that correct, anybody?
Not sure.
We don't have the clerk, we don't have our primary material. I'm pretty sure this is a general statute thing, and if it's a general statute commission, then it is bound by minority party representation. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Was that the extent of your questions?
More or less.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just want to comment that if you gave them a payways like the parks erected for their bus drivers, you might have better luck getting people.
Maybe.
Okay. It doesn't look like anyone else has questions. So, we will vote on 2019, 482, reduction in size of the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And I think you're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are on to 2019, 481, rehabilitate street side of Clubhouse, Shenandoah Costet Golf Course, on page 45, and I believe we're on Councilor Schmidt.
Yes, and there is no motion in my packet, but...
You're correct.
I think that we have Gary Schneider here to explain it.
Thank you, Councilor Schmidt. Hello, Mr. Schneider, thank you for waiting patiently after.
Good evening. I have provided to the council a cost estimate and a plan of the proposed streetside improvements to the Shenandoah Costet Clubhouse building, the Shinni building there. The department was directed to prepare a plan to rehab the entire frontage of the clubhouse of the building there. The deck replacement program planned, project, did not anticipate this need, and so we have prepared something, the plan. The concept plan that you see there has, has been presented to the city planner for administrative site plan approval. It does meet that standard, that approval should be received by the, by us, by the town in two or three weeks from now. What we, what is being proposed is, as the plan shows, is to address the issues, some of the shortcomings, some of the issues in front of the building, and we're going to call it the street side of the building there off the deck. The deck remains, nothing gets changed. What we do see there is two handicap parking spaces, they are currently existing there, but they'll be made to a standard. The existing island is made smaller to provide a 12-foot lane, drop-off lane, that you would enter and then exit the area there. It does provide for redoing the planters on both sides, and also that center island, which is made smaller, there'll be plantings in there. It does address some of the peeling paint or stucco on the block walls that need to be done, also, the city's requesting an additional, a couple panels for the driveway apron on the right-hand side of that drawing, if it's facing north. So, what we have is a deck being completed, the contractor's end date is supposed to be July, well, the contract is July 29th, it is the 24th, he has the railing to install and some deck boards to put in. After that, the Public Works Department will go in there and make... After that, the Public Works Department will go in there and make the area safe. We will temporarily patch the area to make it usable for people to use that ramp and to provide several, the handicap parking spaces in front. If the council concurs with this plan, then funding has to be provided either by using Public Works operational funds, and I cannot guarantee that there won't be a fourth quarter transfer, or a fourth quarter, you know, transfer that would be requested by the department to finish this work. The other option is going for supplemental appropriation, adding more money to this project, which of course takes Town Council and RTM an approval for $30,000, or to place everything into a CIP project for the next fiscal year, which would be, we would submit it as regular budget process, excuse me, budget process, in January and February. It gets approved, the council then reviews it. If it's approved, goes to the RTM, and it moves forward from there. So those are the options that we have for the project. Of course, the spreadsheet that we have in the back for the cost estimates, it's, it's varied. It will be bid out. For instance, the plantings are recommended, or not recommended, we are, we're assigning an allowance to that. I do believe that there, there is the garden club that will be taking, reviewing or providing information or planting schedule for that. The concrete work, we will bid out. The stucco work, we would bid out. The concrete curbing that we placed, we would do that, and of course, the Public Works Department would do the paving. The line striping, well, we will probably bid out because we will want epoxy paint, and neither the city or the town has the, has the equipment to apply epoxy paint. If we apply epoxy paint, it lasts not forever, but close to forever. If it's a latex paint, you need to refresh it after so many years. Part of the project then, because of the parking, if you look at the plan that we showed there, to the right-hand side, the small parking lot, there'll be two handicap parking spaces that'll be reconfigured there, and then there also then provides three regular car parking. We will, by the little front island, mark that no parking. They'll be painted, and no parking signs will be placed there because people do try to sneak, not sneak in, they park there, and people pulling out have a hard time. So that's the project.
Thank you. Councilor Obray will start us off.
The handicap parking, you're going to have two in front of the building?
Correct.
And are you going to leave the side parking lot the way that it is now?
The, the way it is now, because we had a line stripe, the side parking lot will have two handicap parking spaces, one van accessible, and three regular that'll be pulled in. So it'll be a total of five parking spaces for three regular, two handicap, by code. This is not biased, this is by building code.
We never had that in the past. It was just regular parking, and the handicap was in the front where it's obtainable.
Correct, but we're going by the city regulations?
They were the ones that said that we needed to do that.
City Planner, we, we are doing, we're doing an improvement out there. We must bring this up to code.
When we first started this, what was the completion date?
Contract was, contract was signed on, on March 19th. The start date was May 1st. The original completion date was June 29th. There was given an extension because of, of changed conditions. Revised completion date, 7/29/19.
It's now what?
7/29, July 29th.
I don't know how much I'm allowed to say tonight or not say. I've been extremely disappointed by what we've put these, this business through this summer, and I'm extremely disappointed when we had our biggest event that we have down there, the senior golf tournament, that there was no provisions made to clean up the front to make it look any better at all. When by there today, you have a dumpster out in front, and yet they don't even bother to put the garbage in it. They didn't keep the fence up. They've done nothing to keep it so that it was neat, and I feel that's your responsibility. I just, I just, I don't even know how to explain how I feel about this project. If I had a business there, I would not be as patient as those people are. I, I think it's deplorable what we've done to them, and I think we added to it this weekend. The beautification club, beautification committee is working on doing, being in a position to do some of the plantings. I don't know if you've had any conversations with Rachel or not. I don't know. What do you do with a situation like this where you have people, you got, you got one person down there building a deck? You know, you hired a company. You didn't hire one person.
And we're having a company to perform to the contract. If he does not complete the work by 7/29, I do believe, I'll have to read the contract, there are clauses for liquidated damages.
But you can't say to somebody that you've hired, you'd like them to keep it presentable, to put the people on there that need to be there to complete the job? You're going to wait till the 29th day to see if it's done?
By contract language, I can't tell them the means or methods of construction. Now, now, I've been involved in over a quarter of a billion dollars' worth of construction for the Towne Grattan. Emery Term here is Public Works Director. There's been several contracts that have been real critical that had a clause of liquidated damages, but also had a clause in there that if they get the work done quickly and earlier, we would reward them. A thousand dollars, a thousand dollars a day. This was for the sewer outfall. There's liquidated damages, but there's also a thousand dollars a day if the contractor performed better than his contract. And believe it or not, the Towne Grattan paid for that to get the contract done. So I don't, I don't know much about contract law, that's for the attorneys, but I do know that that's what has been done before. Liquidated damages can be assigned if there are damages to the town, to the owner, for the work that's not being done. So work is being done. There was changed conditions out there, with changed conditions, which means that there was a rock fill there instead of sound soil. It had to be redesigned. That design had to be approved by the city building official. City building official did his due diligence. He did it in a timely manner, and then from there, the plans were approved, and the contractor could then purchase more material, which was the rebar. Concrete work gets sent in. We were out there assisting him, out there doing more excavation to, to get this thing moving. After it was framed up, it had to sit and wait for a while until the city building inspector inspected the framing and certified it to be acceptable, and then a decking could go on. Is this one of our better contractors? He's performing so far. Can he get the railing in by the 29th? I hope he can. He has the material. But after that, we will be out there. Public Works, I've told the manager, will be out there next week, working concurrently with them to clean up that front end so that there's a paved surface out there, so that that front end of the building can be used with the ramp.
You know, originally, we were supposed to start this last, last fall. We appropriated the money for this a long time ago, and to do it this time of year, I think, again, is very poor planning. I don't want to beat a dead horse. I'm just extremely upset about the process and the impact on their business. I'm sure if we compared their numbers for this summer versus last summer, they would not be the same, and I don't think that's what we should be doing to businesses. We rent them that space. It's our responsibility to make it so that they can make what they usually make, and we interfered with that, and I don't think that should have happened. I'm sure you know how to do contracts, much better than I know how to do a contract, but it would seem like if there had been a bonus in this one, it might have made a difference, but also in there, it should have said, at the end of every day, you clean that place up because there's an ongoing business, and that was never attended to. The fences were down half the time, they were up some of the time. There was junk all over the place. I had to request that you bring in a dumpster and start putting the stuff in the dumpster. That's not my job. So that's what I have to say about it at this point.
So my, my question is, what is the timeframe? If we would say alternative one, go for it and get it all done, it's, it's a, it's a town property. My view is, if you own something, you should take care of it. If we want to just get it done, get it done now. Can it all be done this summer? That way, they don't have to go through this again next year.
Oh, this will be done this summer. It's what we had, we spoke to the, I spoke to the owners on this and several other items out there today, along with Mark Berry, and we said 60 to 90 days to complete this. Once we get the funding, we have to order the material, we have to put some bid packages together. The paving and the concrete work, the, the concrete curbing, we can do, but I'm in the middle right now, starting a major road in the Towne Grattan, which is Pumpkin Hill Road. We're going to be reclaiming that road. Right now, we're taking tree stumps out, redoing the basins, and, and working with Lejard for traffic control, and that's going to start the middle of August. That will take approximately four weeks to complete. By that time, I can get the bid packages out. The owners are also concerned too about business interruption, and they said 60 to 90 days would, would put it more into, I'm not going to use, well, I can use the word off-season, it's a slower season. It's not really slow, but that's after the summer months. Now, we're talking September, October. And so they were, I'm going, I'll use the word comfortable with that, other than us getting in there right away, but I'll get in there next week with our forces to make it safe, working concurrently. The contractor can work off the deck to put the railing in, and we can get that up and running so that the front of the building can be used. Will it look, it'll look neat? Will it look pretty? No, because the, that center island will not be done. We're going to use that to control the rainwater, the surface water that's coming off the pad, so we use that as a, as a drywall, if, if you want to say that, with the rock that's there. But it will be better than, than just what it looks like now. So 60 to 90 days if the funding's approved. So we're looking at end of September to start, and about a month to complete because there's little, little portions. That may not be bad too, because the plantings, if we do any plantings, they should be done in September or October, not during the hot season.
So you're saying 60 to 90 days to have it, you said it's not going to look pretty. When will it look pretty? At the end of 60 to 90 days, it'll be done, and it'll look like a nice respectable business that you want to walk in and have a meal at?
The front will be done in 60 to 90, 60 to 90 days, the front will be done. We will be out of there. The building will not be painted. That wasn't part of the thing. That's into the next CIP project for next year.
Right. Okay. I just don't, we, we've lost a season, and I concur with Councilor Obray is, I hated to see the senior open there and have it looking the way it looked. I think it was a little embarrassing to see it looking like that when we had the PGA in there. So I, my view is, get it done, get it done right, get it done now. That way, we do not lose another season at, at the course at Shenni. Any other counselors wish to chime in? Counselors up here?
I, I have less to say than I did a few minutes ago because Counselor Obray said it well, and I agree fully with what she said and the way she said it. The thing I'm concerned about now, instead of having money coming from your fund or money coming from a new appropriation, that's, that, that building is part of the golf course. The golf course is self-sustaining. Aren't there funds in the golf course that can pay for the renovation to that building?
Mr. Burton?
They don't have a real large fund balance. We do all the CIP work. They don't pay for the CIP work.
All right.
Counselor Franco?
So what Counselor Obray was discussing was the first project we did, and that's not complete. So this is a second additional project we want to do at that location. How did this come about, that, this new work? Because it states in here, the deck replacement project did not anticipate the desire to address the entire street side portion of the clubhouse, such as the replacement of the pavement, curbing, pavement marking, and plantings. So.
Councilor's asking me to add it in. So we were already in process, and I was asked to look at the cost to do a more complete project to make it look good.
Thank you. No one else? So Counselor Obray?
That was not part of the original plan for this?
Not all these other things, no. I mean, we just repaid.
How could you, how could you look at something like that, that you know is going to be dug up and torn up and everything else in order to do this and not have a provision in there for, to complete it the way you're talking about completing it now?
Well, I think, well, Gary can speak more to it. I wasn't involved in that planning process, but I think the council was told, what is that going to be done?
The department was directed to replace the decking. The decking was serviceable, along with the hand railing out there. We were directed to put a project together to replace the decking. The other items, which is the peeling paint, the curbing that was out during that, that was going to be addressed at a later date and not part of this project. If anything, this could be classified as a project creep. Is it, is it, should it be done? I agree, but it was not part of the original project.
Well, why didn't you suggest that? That it was an incomplete project?
The building is not, I maintain the building, I'm in charge of the capital construction in the Towne Grattan. That building is, is operated or owned or managed by the Department of Parks and Recreation. I was working with Mark Berry on what we needed to do with that, and the direction was just the, just the deck.
And so there was no conversation between the two of you saying, you know, we can't just put a deck because we're going to be tearing everything up while we do it. We need a plan for this whole thing.
With Mark Offinger, we had a whole plan for the whole frontage to include all the way from Eastern Point, Eastern Point Road up, which included all the little parking lots and that. Now, that never went anywhere, so there was advanced planning. Now, Mark Berry and me are putting something together that'll be presented in the CIP that does the other side of the building, which is the golf course side of the building, also addresses the golf cart building that we have there that the council would like to see painted. So we're putting those numbers together. That'll be presented as a large CIP to complete the rest of the building.
That's not answering my question. My question was, how can two very competent people put together a project and not make it a complete project?
And because I was directed just to replace the ramp and the deck, period.
And you didn't question the fact that, you're the one that's experienced this?
I did that. I was given those directions, and that's what I've done.
Okay.
All right. So, so I'm going to just jump in before, we have other counselors that wish to speak, and, and just note that regardless of whether we choose to move ahead with the additions, the original project is still not done. The original project will not be done until the 29th at the earliest, and that would be simply leaving everything the way it is with the new deck in place and the railing up. So pretty much your choices are, end it with what it is right now and leave it looking the way it does, or go ahead and try to do what this new additional work is. Counselor Heed had his hand up. Then Franco again.
Sure. So the CIP that we approved last year was for the deck and the ramp only, is that right?
Correct.
And then this additional project is estimated to be 30,000, and that's like another phase of renovations or upgrades. If we were to wait and put it into the, just throwing it out there, if we were to wait and throw it into the budget for next year, then has go through the whole budget process next May, next, I think May is when the RTM does it, right? So then it gets approved in June, and then the project will probably start in July, August of next year, is that right?
Again, from what I'm hearing from the, from the council and the two business owners there, that would not be the time to start it. It would start probably later in September or October. But the project would be larger. It would include the golf cart house or shack, if you want to call it that. It would, it would, it would address some of the shortcomings on the course side of the building, which is the rock that's just there that they have a problem keeping where it is, where the carts are, and some of the other exterior work that they would like, again, the golf course, the personnel would like to have done on, on that building. There is also money in this year's budget that we're looking at, the interiors, which is the handicap toilets, and priming numbers back for that. So whether it be included as one large project or break it up into several smaller projects, but the exterior of the building would include the front and the back. We will not leave it looking as it is. There'd be temporary pavement there. It would be cleaned up. It would look presentable. It would not look like what is here. Nothing should be planted there until those planting beds get put in, and we can regrade the area to get the water out and to get, and get all the stuff done.
All right. So if we were to go forward with this and we get this done this year, then basically everything on this side of the building, except the painting, would be done. So then.
Correct.
There would be less interference next year if we do the other side of the building and the golf course, golf cart house, or whatever it is, presumably.
Presumably.
Right? And then, do we have the, the funds available? And because, you know, like, when we get to October, we'd like to revisit the fund balance policy.
Right. Well, at this point, we're not looking at fund balance. Hopefully, we'd find, first of all, dryer bus to get it out of the You hopefully would find, first of all, dryer bus to get it out of the budget, but then a fourth quarter transfer. You know, we'll, we, me and Cindy will, uh, keep track of it, anything that's out there kind of pending, so we know, you know, contingency would be, you know, if not in the budget, then it would go to contingency. The hope would be, we want to take out a fund balance, if at all possible. Um, unless something really extraordinary happens, then hopefully that would be the case, that contingency would at least cover it.
Gotcha.
And I was gonna mention, I was gonna mention the handicap accessibility, but I also mentioned that we're also looking at, and I can't remember if I talked to Gary or not, but locker rooms, they need some work in there that I want, looked at next year. And we're talking about air conditioning, seeing if anything can be done with that, too.
Thank you.
Council Franko?
So, you just answered some of my questions. I haven't been out to the area, so I'm not exactly sure how it looks, or... So, you're saying you could easily clean it up, throw, I mean, is the pavement ripped out in that entryway?
We, we, we had to rip out a lot of the pavement, because there's large boulders underneath. So, just from where the, uh, supports for the deck was, uh, we had to excavate a little larger, uh, material on that. At the same time, uh, we did take some of the concrete curbing out, and so, we could clean it, we would clean that up, still providing a hard surface, and that's temporarily what, what would be out there.
That's from Council Obera.
So, there's like, the picture that I've given here, it shows some water in the...
Right.
In the driveway?
That, we will regrade out, and we'll push that water into that center island where the rock is.
Okay.
Right now, there's a rain leader that comes down in an area that's gonna have to be relocated, and we'll do that, too, by piping it into the center.
Okay. So, I'm just trying to decide whether this should wait for a CIP, or if it should proceed right away, and what is your recommendation?
Uh, we have a plan. We, uh, we, we have a plan that's, we feel is gonna be approved by the City of Groton. My recommendation is to go forward with it. We're gonna pull the Band-Aid off, let's pull it off all at once. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Um, Council Baumgartner, Mr. Burton wanted to say something, is that all right if he goes?
I was, I was just gonna say, I agree with Gary, let's get it done.
Council Baumgartner?
I see that there is a lot of, that have, a wa, a lot of water that has accumulated around, um, where there, it's not so much a traffic circle, but where there's gonna be, um, some landscaping. Um, I know, uh, we worked together on the, um, a rain garden by the human, uh, Human Services Building. Is that an option for, uh, landscaping as well? Kind of taking, uh, utilizing that space for, um, a rain garden?
That's something we have not looked at. That center island that's gonna be remaining is really small, from the size that we put out at the, uh, the Human Services Building, wouldn't fit in that center island, because there is a structure, and there's a dryweller in there already, so we don't feel that there's much there. We will regrade it, you know, to push the water out. We won't put concrete curbing in it, because people do destroy, if we don't give them an edge to drive around, they just short-circuit and jump, and jump the curb, and that's why we're putting concrete curbing in, instead of asphalt curbing. So, uh, for a rain garden, I don't believe in that one. If we do anything with the larger parking lots, we would make sure that, we would provide that, either a rain garden, or have sheet flow off, like the larger one is. But this one is a really tight location, uh, to, to try to put something in, because there's that structure in the, that center island. We do believe that's a drywall, and we don't wanna mess around with it. It does something, we just wanna leave it there.
Councils of Perry, and then back to Obera.
You know, two years ago, uh, a little more than two years ago, this room was filled with about a hundred and fifty or more people, who came to protest the malfeasance of the then-sitting council, who were abusing the owners of that restaurant. And here we are sitting now, and they're being abused again by their, their property not being available for their proper use, by the dis, the terrible, uh, appearance of the front of that building for too long a time. This should've been done a long time ago. But right now, I think we owe it to them to act promptly and get this job done. I think we have, we should do what is necessary, that this job is done expeditiously and completed in time. Uh, that's about it.
Council Obera?
Um, I would just request a timeline for when each one of these things are gonna be done. When it, when it'll be cleaned up now, because it sounds like it's gonna be cleaned up and just top it down, and then these other things are gonna be done, but I'd like timelines on all of them, and a completion date for all.
Gary, you'll get that to me.
So, the, the work that's to be done after the twenty-ninth is gonna be done by town staff?
Everything but the ramp will be done by town staff.
I thought the ramp was in place.
Or subcontracting. Oh, or, or, yeah, by town staff, or subcontract. The concrete work, we're gonna put, we put it out to bid. The plantings, if we're responsible for those, and if it's over the bid limit, we gotta bid those plantings out. I don't know if Parks and Rec has, has the forces to do the planting, or will have a landscaper come in. The stucco work and the painting work, that'll be bid out. So, there's certain aspects that we need to put a bid package together, and per the, uh, rules and regulations of our purchasing manual, bid the items, or seek proposals, or seek pricing on them. So, we will put that together, but the asphalt work, the concrete curb installation, the precast, that's done by the Public Works Department, and we will do that.
So, so you think, given the sixty to ninety day timeline that you've expressed, and knowing that you have to go out to bid and do these RFPs, you still think you can do it within the constraints of the ninety days?
Yes.
Okay. Any other councilors want in on this? Okay, so we have to make a choice, we have to come to some consensus as to what, um, alternative we would like. You have two alternatives outlined for you on page forty-five. Um, one is to proceed with the plan and direct funding the work from Public Works Operations Account or by supplemental appropriation, and two is to proceed with patching and placing the work into the next budget cycle. Council Parker?
I apologize. Did you say you wanted it not to come out of the funding? You want to see if it can come out of contingency?
Well, first, we'll try to take out his budget, and just have, see where he's at later in the year, and then we would look at contingency. And if contingency fails, then we would look at fund balance, but...
All right.
We'll try to save as much on other things as we can along the way.
All right, one more question. This still has to go to RTM, correct?
Depends if we're gonna be a fourth quarter transfer or not, it would be at that point.
At that point, okay.
Because we're first trying to take it out of budget.
Okay. Just wanted to...
Councils of Perry?
Sorry.
I knew that we, uh, uh, proceed with the, uh, plan and direct funding, uh, the work from Public Works Operations Account.
I so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Franko. So, I'm, I'm gonna say it one more time, make sure I have it correct. Uh, Councils of Perry moved to proceed with the plan and direct funding from the Public Works Operations Account?
Correct.
You're, I, no, I'm trying to read it the way you said it. You want it just end there, you don't want the, or by supplemental appropriation?
We can deal with that later when we come to it.
Okay. So, his, Councils of Perry's resolution reads, "To proceed with the plan and direct funding from the Public Works Operations Account." That is the motion that has been made and seconded. Are you withdrawing your second?
No, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
To proceed with the plan and direct funding the work from Public Works Operations Account or by supplemental appropriation, as stated as, uh, alternative one.
Is there a second?
There.
Okay, so I'm gonna read that. So, the, the amendment is to add "or by supplemental appropriation" to Councils of Perry's motion. So, we would be, we will vote on the amendment first, and then, um, we'll go from there. Is there any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I have one question.
Council Obera?
When it says "account or by supplemental appropriation," does that mean they come back here?
Yes, it would require coming back here. It'd be a fourth quarter transfer, or, if, contingency, whatever, it'd be a transfer, right?
If it doesn't come out of the Public Works Operations Account. Councils of Perry, was that your question?
Well, yeah, I, I just wanna be sure that we're not saying that it's an either/or. We're gonna take the money out of the operations account, and then, if necessary, we'll make a supplemental appropriation.
Right, which would require your approval.
Okay. Okay, so, we will vote on, um, the amendment, which doesn't make much sense by itself, but it's okay, everybody, I, everybody understands, the amendment is to add "or by supplemental appropriation." So, all those in favor of the amendment, which adds the words "or by supplemental appropriation", say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the amendment passes. So, right now, we are back to the motion, which says, "To proceed with the plan and direct funding, um, funding the work from Public Works Operations Account or by supplemental appropriation." Councils of Perry?
I, I made that, and I voted for the amended motion.
Right.
We passed a motion, that, that one's null and void by virtue of the fact that we passed the amendment.
We are voting on the motion as amended, which is what we have to do now. We can't just pass "or by supplemental appropriation." We have to vote for the whole amendment, but, we have to vote for the whole motion. Because as it is right now, all that was, all that we voted was the wording "or by supplemental appropriation."
Okay.
So, now, we're gonna move to your motion, which has been amended, that we all just voted unanimously on. So, right now, the vote is for proceeding with the plan and directing funding the work from the Public Works Operations Account or by supplemental appropriation. That's what we're voting right now. Any discussion on that item?
Can you read the one we had before? Is that the same thing?
It's, it's item number one.
Yeah.
It's alternative number one. That's all it is.
Well, why are we voting on that, when we had an amendment that we agreed to?
All that the amendment said was "by supplemental appropriation." So, we now, now we need to vote for the whole thing, including the amendment.
Okay, let's not argue about it, let's vote on it again.
I'm not arguing.
No, no, she's explaining it to me.
I'm answering, trying to answer the question, just like I tried to answer your question.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready? All those in favor of alternative one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So, moved unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are on two, twenty nineteen, four seventy-nine, which is on page forty-eight. And there is no motion. This is use of broad-spectrum glyphosate herbicides. And there are four methods that are given as the alternatives to discontinuing use of Roundup. And they've been laid out here in front. So, Mr. Schneider, did you want to begin discussion, or do you want us just to jump in?
Uh, let me just add a cou, a couple of things that were, were on the referral. This is public works use of, uh, use only, this is under guide rails, guardrails, guide rails, wire rope, metal beam rails. It's also on our operational fence lines. This has nothing to do with the schools, playgrounds, recreational fields, even around general buildings. So, this has really to do with maintenance of, of our road network and some of our operations areas. So, it's fence lines in our operational areas, are the fence lines around our wastewater treatment plant, that are heavy overgrown, are fence lines that are around this location here, the Public Works Annex, or the Town Hall Annex here. And there's one or two cell towers that we, uh, maintain, uh, the fence lines for. So, there, there's very limited personnel interaction at these locations, so it has nothing to do with recreational fields or recreational, uh, locations. The amount of area that we had, uh, that we maintain with this chemical, are, with this method of herbicide, is about fifty-one thousand linear feet, and the spay path is about five feet wide, so it's about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet of space. There's about seventy-seven-hundred linear feet of fence lines. The applications that we did use is, is, was applied with, by a licensed applicator, it's not a Public Works Department employee. We do contract that out, this out, it's state-led bid. So, a licensed applicator applies it at the proper rate. It is not applied near wetlands, in wetlands, or watercourses. So, what it does, and we do one application a year. Uh, so, this is what we have done for several, probably over fifteen or twenty years. We had the wetlands, uh, agency look at this, uh, they provided our guidance way back and when, fifteen, twenty years ago, and, um, most of our guidance was stay out of the wetlands and be cognizant of where you put it. Some towns do use it to control the, um, growth at the curb and gutter lines, where the asphalt and the curbing, concrete curbing is. Uh, there's usually a growth of, of weeds there. Some people mow them down, some people weed whack them, some people use their own Roundup from their house. Other towns, uh, do that to make the area look proper. That, those weeds, or material that grows, or this weeds, woody material that grows in that crack, cannot be taken out even with a str, street, street sweeper, with the brushes that we have on it. All it does is kind of groom the plants that are there. So, we use it sparingly, we use it with a licensed applicator, uh, we use it once a year, uh, cost-effective. It's about four thousand dollars a year, uh, for that application. So, that's the, the background of where we use it, why we use it, and, uh, who we, and who, who do we have using it.
And the reason why we're discussing this is because, um, local municipalities, um, some states, all across the country, places across the world, are, um, ceasing use of Roundup because it's carcinogenic. So, um, we have a couple of options that do not involve using, um, the glyphosate. One being an organic method, which uses something, I believe Waterford is going to, called Avenger Weed Killer, which uses a, um, a safe product called limonene. And then, there are the old-fashioned ways, where you're hand-cutting, um, the weeds itself. So, I don't know if anyone has opinion on this. I am in favor of not using Roundup, um, and either going with the organic Avenger Weed Killer, or going to hand-cutting. Council Heath, Council Baumgartner?
I'd also be in favor of not using Roundup. Um, but, on the second page, there are, there's a, a list of costs here, so the herbicides have, uh, it's just four thousand for the Roundup, hand-cutting thirty-five thousand. When you go to machine cutting, it, it jumps, because we have to buy the equipment.
Have to buy the equipment.
Yeah. Um, but, in the cons for hand-cutting, you state, um, I mean, it looks like that's most cost-effective, uh, but there are additional worker injuries, and that's probably not included in this number.
Uh, any hand-cutting with that, and in the years that we, when we done hand, hand-cutting, uh, work zone safety was not one of the major focuses. Uh, the employees would be outside working, outside, they are outside, working on the side of the road. But right now, because of the regulations and guidelines, and to keep our employees safe, you're talking about traffic control. On military highway, you'd be talking about having two police officers there with lights, because nobody is looking where they're going right now. They're reading their cellphone, what's on their GPS. So, work zones have to be set up, so there's two flaggers or police officers there, cones are put in, and it's just using a brush cutter underneath. Then we have all the issues from poison ivy, to ground hornets, to rocks flying, the head hits a rock, launches it, and, uh, all, all of those other stuff. So, hand-cutting, very labor-intensive, very workers' comp, uh, issues, from stinging bugs and everything else, to people falling down in embankments. Uh, so, uh, that, that is an issue. The estimates of those methods, some of them are estimates, the one for the, uh, Roundup, the first one there, that's, that's based on, on our experience. The other one is what I have estimated that it would cost. And the organic herbicide, it needs to be applied several times. It does not kill the root system. It takes the waxy surface off the leaf, and the leaf dehydrates and turns brown. Most of the applications have to be done at, at the right time of day, and when the plant is young. Older plants may take five, six, seven types of applications to do it. There is Avenger. There's a couple of other stuff that, uh, that other products are out there that can be used, but it's multiple applications. And that's why the, the number climbs there to, to get underneath the rails, uh, to get it down, uh, to try to kill the brush itself or the woody, the woody material.
Mr. Burton wanted to say something, or do you have another question, Councilor Heed?
Go ahead.
I just had a quick question, just to clarify on the organic. It's three applications total would cost thirty thousand, or?
Total thirty thousand.
Okay, I want to make sure it's not thirty thousand per application.
No.
If we could do three, that would be the most cost-effective alternative.
Back to Councilor Heed.
Yeah, the, um, what I was getting at with the hand cutting being thirty-five thousand is, does that include the traffic control?
Traffic control, that's made of having a contractor provide traffic control. And then if, uh, some locations will have police officers, and that's twenty-five dollars an hour, uh, for that. That, that'd be on our major roads like Military Highway, the ones that are dangerous. Uh, several of the other ones that take a lot of travel, uh, River Road wouldn't be one. Uh, I'm just trying to think real quickly. Uh, Pumpkin Hill Road would be one. They just fly down from Ledgerd or fly up to Ledgerd down the road. So that would require a little, little bit of, uh, of a presence of a police officer there to slow people down. But those are the estimates of what we had with a contractor. And for the organic, that's for a contractor to apply it. I would have to find a contractor who would apply that material.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Baumgartner.
To your knowledge, has the town or your department, um, explored establishing pollinator habitats along the roadsides as an alternative to potentially spraying some areas?
Uh, those are the large areas. I know that the state's, the state DOT's vegetation plan does have a large section of that. But, but that's, that's for large areas, you know, intersections, cloverleafs and that, those large grassy areas that they see turning into wildflowers or something else. We, we don't do that. This application here, and when we cut on, on other areas where aren't guide rails, we're only going about five feet in just to keep the brush from encroaching onto the travel portion of the road. But if we were cutting a large intersection, uh, a large swath between a four lane highway and that, then pollinator is, is what you do is you let those grasses grow. You also seed wildflower and that to, uh, to, to, um, create those areas. So we do look at what the state's DOT's vegetation manuals and other guidelines are and, and follow in step with them. Uh, but where we're having this now, it's just, it's, it's, no, no, it's not the proper application for those pollinators.
But are, are there any of those areas where we currently utilize a herbicide?
Uh, do, do any places where we utilize the herbicide is just right underneath the guide rails and the fence line. So it's just, it's not those large areas.
Okay.
Where the poll, where you want a field of grass or pollinators or wildflowers growing.
Thank you.
Councilor Atwater.
I may be very naive about this, but I guess my question was, having seen a commercial on TV recently about Roundup, is, is this article that has come out proven that it's cancerous, or is it maybe cancerous? I'm ju, I'm just curious what, you know?
World Health Organization says it's a carcinogen.
And it was a big payout from them for somebody to sue them.
For several people to sue.
Okay, I, I just, uh...
Any, any other discussion or questions? Councilor Obray.
How's it look when you finish doing this? Have, have we done it in an area that you could see what it looks like when all this dies?
Uh, uh, we use the same process as the state DOT. So once you come up Fort Hill Road and turn onto Route two fifteen, all the guide rails, guide rails there, that's what it looks like. I mean, that's the closest that we have. Uh, the state DOT does it, uses the, uh, that, that method. Uh, our methods are on Fishtown Road we have. I think we have some on Fishtown Road. Uh, not, not by the brook. Uh, but we have certain areas. But the places if you want, if you want to look and the same application rate, the once a year in the springtime, would be the state roads. So one is just right out here, up on Top of Hill.
So, sorry to interrupt you, but are you talking about when you use the Roundup or when you use the Avenger?
Roundup. I, I, no, I don't know if, I know Waterford's thinking or is going to Avenger. I've just read some, you know, articles, some of their literature on it, of, of what it does. Uh, did some, some web searches on, on what that type of material is. You can use vinegar, same thing. It strips the waxy coating off the leaves and they die. Uh, but it's killing the root system is, is what we're looking at. And I don't know, I do not know if Avenger works on poison ivy. Uh, that'd be the one thing. I don't know.
Councilor Franco.
So what I just heard you say is that the state DOT is using Roundup in our town?
Correct. I do believe Roundup. They, they're using our herbicide. There's different brands right now. The, the, the chemical name is, 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 uh, can be, there's different formulations now.
Glyphosate. Are they using glyphosate?
Yeah, there's, it could be Razor, Roundup, Rodeo, and there's a couple of other, other mixtures too that they can use.
So on possibly any road that starts with Root, whatever, Route one eighty-four, Route one, those are all state roads, Root?
And the, the state has their own herbicide program. Also Amtrak and the freight lines through the tunnel around, I don't know what they use.
So if we spend all this extra money, we're not eliminating Roundup from our town?
Uh, I believe not. I, uh, we would have to ask what the DOT uses. Uh, but I, they use, uh, they had used in the past. I did not ask them for this, this thing, what they use.
And you're saying, how much was the total area that you do? I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, we have about fifty-one thousand linear, linear feet of guide rail, guide rail, guide rail is the proper term. It's about five feet wide is the spray path. So we can get under the rail and a little bit behind. We're not doing the whole embankment. We're not doing between that sidewalk or anything else. It's just to get it under, to keep the woody brush and materials that have been growing into the road. Because then it starts growing into the road, people start hugging the center line, and then becomes an issue. They can hide the traffic signs, children, animals, deer.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify from what you're saying. If we change and do something different, we could be spending a lot more money, and we're still not eliminating Roundup from our town. And the state has a lot of roadways in rotten, and I don't know how we'll be helping.
One bite at a time. Councilor Heed.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed the number. Did you say fifteen thousand feet?
Fifty-one thousand feet. I said fifty, I'm sorry, fifty-one thousand linear feet, which is about two hundred fifty-seven thousand square feet because we go five feet wide with the path, spray path, underneath, to get underneath the guide rail, guide rail.
And you'd be, uh, contracting this out, is that right?
We'd, we'd, correct. This would be contracted out. Because right now, the, the herbicide that's provided, sprayed, is our contractor. We provide one town employee with a chase truck. It's actually a lead truck. So they, they will point where the application starts and where the application stops. So it doesn't go crazy.
All right. Well, I, I don't think we can, we can't tell the state what to do, but I think we can control what we do in our own house. And I would support this, uh, with the hand cutting option.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Obray and then Atwater and then Franco. I'm sorry?
Can you just repeat something? I, I didn't hear. What did you say the square footage was? Did you convert that?
It's, it's fifty-one thousand linear feet times five feet. So just multiply, it's about two hundred fifty-seven thousand square feet.
Two hundred fifty-seven.
Councilor Obray, Atwater, and then Zepary.
About nine acres.
If we were to go with the spraying, how would it affect personnel?
Which spraying? The, the Roundup or the organic?
No, if we were paying, if we were paying somebody to come in and spray and we weren't about to cut anymore, that's my question. How would that affect personnel? I mean, we've got a group of people that go out there and mow now, don't we?
No, not this location. This location, we have applied, we haven't done it this year. So I was told to stop the application of a broad-based herbicide, Roundup. So this year, we haven't. With that, we have two crews that go out on, mostly during the, uh, the summer months with boom mowers. It's called a flail mower. That's on a boom. They do the roads that do not have, uh, the guide rails. The boom mower head doesn't fit underneath the guide rail. So it's either handwork, uh, even, or reaching way behind a rail. So the, the rest of the roadside is, is unapplied. There are other towns that do apply herbicide on every piece of the right away. Five feet in, they'll kill everything. We don't do that, just underneath the guide rails. So to affect personnel, there's no effect on personnel. I have a contractor applying the Broadway, the Roundup. We need to have a contractor then apply the, the Avenger or the other products that, that are out there.
Mr. Burton and Atwater and Zepary.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Under the cones, you've got here a cycle, two or more cuttings per year. Who does the cuttings?
That's on the roadsides without the guide rails. That's the Public Works Department.
Well, that's what I was saying. How does it affect these people if we're not going to have them out there mowing the lawns there, other sides?
They will still be mowing the sides. This, this is only for...
They're not maintaining these now. One of the proposals is to start having staff maintain. It's contracted out already. So if we went away from Roundup to hand mowing, then we'll have to have more staff time doing it. So you'll add staff. And my question was, do you have enough staff to do it? What's the effect? Is there any downside?
To, to mowing or for?
If we were going to do hand cutting?
Hand cutting, uh, projects as, as, as such as, it's maintenance projects that we do. Catch basin, uh, catch basin tops that are roadside maintenance, uh, sign maintenance. Uh, what we do in the summers, we also supports the parks program by paving some of their paths. That would be done. So it's all the maintenance work that, that can be done, will be done, uh, would be done, focused on this, and it's labor intensive.
I, you know, I'm completely in favor of the, uh, of the Roundup transition away from it. But as it is, I can't tell you how many calls I get for Public Works, and I don't have the staff through them to get stuff done. We're gonna have, we're getting to the point where we have to start looking at adding staff, just to be aware of whether it's the search, all the things accumulate.
Great. But there are other sprays that we could use, perhaps not quite as effective, fast, as fast. But there are some that would be safer.
Yes.
That's, that's what I would prefer.
That's the Avenger one. Atwater and then Zepary.
Um, following up on what Councilor Franco said, uh, on the fifty-one, or two hundred fifty-five thousand total square feet. I'm just checking here, a, a football field is fifty-seven thousand six hundred square feet. I'm just to give us a perspective. So we're talking about roughly five football fields in the, in the whole town. Uh, I guess I would like to see that we check with the state and see what they're doing. I mean, it's, it's sort of like, I hate to say this, but it, I mean, it's just, it's like the little kid peeing in a swimming school, swimming pool. It's not really going to affect the whole thing. And if the town is, or the state is polluting the whole town on all our state roads, I don't think if we eliminate the pollution of five football fields is really the way to go. And I think we should look into this more. The other thing is, we're certainly not going to change for this summer season. So we've got a, at least a winter to look, look, look at it. It may be, because this is a relative, relatively new issue, I assume from the World Health Organization, that there may be other companies that will now come out with other methods or, or whatever that aren't as expensive or more effective or whatever. So I, I guess my feeling is it should be tabled for the time being.
Councilor Zepary.
Have you looked to see if OSHA has any guidelines or, uh, standards for the safe administration of this material?
Oh, that's why we go to licensed applicator. But instead of Connecticut, you have to have a licensed applicator. They have to have training. I do believe health records and everything else provided.
Now, I asked if you looked to see if OSHA has any standards?
Uh, did they have?
Or guidelines?
I haven't looked specifically on this.
It would help us to know if OSHA has, has, has made anything, statements saying it should or should not be used or it should be used under certain circumstances. And they would have a scientific basis for that opinion. Uh, and it would be something that we could rely on.
I, I can, I can ask. I can ask Khan OSHA or OSHA if, if they, they have anything on the product itself or on the application.
Yeah.
Um, Councilor Schmidt or Parker have not spoken on this issue. Did either of you want to chime in before we go to duplicates?
I think we need to table it. That's just my opinion.
How do they get rid of kudzu?
Oh, I don't know. Uh, I know Roundup gets rid of everything. I, I, I don't, I don't know.
But kudzu just destroys everything in its path.
We could use H and R.
Okay. So we're, we're kind of deteriorating here. Um, so, Councilor Heed.
Sorry, just a quick clarification. I asked, do you contract out or do you hire in staff? And you said you contract out, but then you said, I forget who you were talking to. Um, you said that you would have to hire more staff. So I'm, I'm confused now. What, what are we talking about?
Say that again.
Do we contract out the hand cutting, or do you have to hire staff to do the hand cutting?
Could you contract?
Uh, that could be contracted out too. Uh, you can contract out anything, whether the, the landscapers are all busy right now. But that'd be contracted out. We just don't have the workforce to be sitting here hand cutting. If you look at, that's using a brush cutter, which is a large weed whacker, mile, mile and a half a day per person, hot weather. It's probably even, even less. Work zone set, set up and all any kind of stuff. So that'd be contracted out because we don't have that staff. The staff isn't doing it now. Uh, in fact, our department did it, and when we downsized from our landfill staff years ago, that was one of the options that we took a look at, is going to a herbicide instead of hand cutting along for worker safety and then workers comp exposures.
In reviewing this, it looks like option three isn't really an option at all because it doesn't apply to the area where you need to get the weeds cut, which is under the guardrails.
Correct.
So option three isn't really an option. So we're at do nothing, which is let it grow the way it is, which you said you've been doing this summer. So you haven't applied any Roundup this summer?
We haven't applied any Roundup this summer because we did such a good job for the last couple of years. Nothing's growing right now. We can start seeing some growth migrating in to those areas. So we are good for this year.
Okay. So then, um, the options are cut using hand tools, keep using the Roundup, or switch to an organic, the, the, um, limonene-based products. So we have really three options we need to look at. Um, and I believe you're looking for some consensus from the council so that a motion can be drafted. Is that correct, Mr. Burton?
Yes. So I would like to, if we're looking at the hand, I'd like time for Gary to talk to some contractors and see if there's people available to do that work.
Okay.
Before making that decision.
All right. So then, um, are we comfortable delaying this for, to the next cow, perhaps? Would that give enough time if we waited till the first cow in August?
Uh, I'd, I'd rather go with the second one. One, it, it's not pressing. We're not applying the, the chemical. Uh, we, we're not under contract to do it. Uh, for me to go out and reach out to landscapers who are real busy right now. The rains have affected them. So right now, there, any break in the weather, they're cutting grass and doing the work that they have. So to get a call back is, it will be hard. So I, I need about a month to reach out to some.
So to read any questions to be researched, then you'll look at contract personnel, OSHA, if there's any guidelines?
Correct.
And then what the state and railroads are doing for their, what they're using for their spraying?
That, I may need some assistance from my boss to reach into the upper levels of DOT because they may not want to answer.
So is there any objection to holding off on, um, giving a consensus until the second cow in August?
August or September?
August.
In August, for August, yeah.
Yeah, in August, the last cow in August.
Any objection? Okay, saying that, so then we'll hold off until the second cow in August to get some more information. And we can discuss further then. Councilor Obray and Atwater, have their hands up.
I was just wondering if I might ask you a question before you go. All right. You have a, a pump station on, uh, Bridge Street, and it has like a little park?
Correct. It's a Bridge Street pump station. It's a town-owned, yes.
Yeah. Has there been any conversation between you and the police chief as to what you're going to do with that area?
Uh, no. And the reason, I, I had talked to the chief that we need to, uh, keep people from parking there. I will pull up, this sounds like a repeat, I'll pull up a plan that I had proposed several years ago that never got, uh, had any wings put on it, to turn that into, to, uh, cut off one of the entrances into that area, clean up around the pump station, and then more or less block it off to, to turn it off, block it off. Remove some of the pavement down there that is useless. Uh, that, that section on, if you look at, that was where the old bridge was, o, over the Amtrak, in that section there. Amtrak still needs access to it for their current traps right there. But I had a plan to, uh, upgrade that at minimal cost. So I can present that to the town manager to do.
I think that would be a good idea. I'm sorry?
I was just going to add something to what Gary said for you.
I mean, we have two establishments, hotels on either side of it.
Absolutely.
And I think to have a park area there would be much more inviting than what we have there now. Especially if we could provide, uh, an entrance, uh, you know, a place where they can't park on the street.
Absolutely.
You can walk into it and enjoy it. So I, I would appreciate you pulling that out.
I'll dust the plan off.
Mr. Burton, did you want to add something?
I was just going to add that Deb Jones did talk with Electric Boats Facilities Manager about making sure that people don't park there. And I talked to Susan Adams and Liz Powers last week to make sure that people are staying away from it.
Well, they blocked it off, you know. Uh, but today, somebody had taken down one of the stanchions. So, uh, that's not, that's not a resolution, as much as it would seem like it might be.
Okay, we had two hands still, Councilor Atwater and then Franco.
All right, just going, going back to the town manager on, on what you were going to research, like the OSHA and so forth. Can we also do some research on alternates to the one alternate that we seem to have here as far as, what was it? Lemon cider, something you called it, I'm sorry.
Limonene, d-limonene is what, what is in Avenger, which is what Waterford is going to, is, that's what I've been told.
Right. Lye, vinegar, combinations of, I have it here. So it's, it's, it's all, all, or all, yes, it's easy. I'll provide it.
That will smell like a salad.
Councilor Franco has the floor now.
All right, Mrs. Warren.
So, Mr. Schneider, today, um, I was looking on Facebook, and a post came up about the schools. And they had a design for Cutler, um, on Facebook today. And they had all these, they had like possibly five renderings of... And that, do you know when you might be coming, or they might be coming to us and giving us a presentation with these designs?
I, I can have the permanent school building committee do that, yes. Uh, right now, they're still going through iterations on both of those elementary school sites of fitting in and working with the planning and zoning people in the town and... fitting in and working with the planning and zoning people in the town and the city. So we're narrow, it's the site work, it's not site work, the site planning is being narrowed down. I'll ask the Permanent School Building Committee to, with the architect, how to come and make a presentation before the council.
Yeah, because I don't, I haven't seen anything and I know the Board of Ed hasn't seen anything until Facebook today.
We're still going through the cost estimate. The sites are being moved around, the one on the west side, we're not consolidating, pushing the buildings together. There's a lot of fill coming off the site, so we are now impacting the fields in the backs or raising those up to save money. So they're, they're coming together. I know Permanent School Building Committee has been working closely with the ed specifications, the Board of Education for that, but this is a good time for the council to be briefed on it.
Right. Just the layout of Cutler, I had concerns about how it was laid out and like there's, there's not going to be a tennis court there anymore? Is that correct?
I don't know. I don't want to answer yes or no, but I'll ask that question.
All right, so I was just hoping that you can come and give us a presentation. And one more thing for John Burton, if you do talk to somebody at DOT with the state, can you find out how much Roundup they're using? How many square feet, linear feet, whatever it is?
I will try.
If they give you any information, thank you.
So we're on just number seven, other business, and I have a question for you before you leave. Following up on the Permanent School Building Committee, there were a handful of counselors who sent letters to the Permanent School Building Committee asking them to look at the installation of solar panels, if there was to be the situation where they would be coming in under budget. And we haven't, at least I have not heard anything back from anyone on the Permanent School Building Committee acknowledging that they've received those letters and no reply certainly saying that they were supportive or in opposition. Do you have any input on that item?
Yes, there's several things that were, that was working in the background. One, that should have been acknowledged and I will work, not on that, I will work to get that corrected. The second thing in the background, it was estimating the cost, whether, what could be put on what building, where and why and how? And if it met the ed specifications or if it didn't, who didn't? If it was in the ed specifications or not, they have to have high-performance buildings, what the rough costs would be, and of course, are they state reimbursable or not? So all of that, numbers are coming together and I will get with Rick to have the Permanent School Building Committee chair and respond back with the issues. I do believe they'll be taking it up at their next meeting formally, but I will make sure that the response back is that we've got it, we're looking at it and we're looking at it. So they are looking at it on all sites, on all three sites.
So then if the public is interested in having renewables used on these school building projects, there's still time for them to contact the members of the Permanent School Building Committee and voice their opinion?
And they could. What it may come down to is what we are looking at for the solar panels are, is that since it's not in the ed specifications, it's not reimbursable by the grant, and we believe not, so this is from preliminary, is that it would be a modification to the scope of the project, which would then come back to the town council. And I do believe the town council, if you read the first paragraph, can modify the scope of the project. And that would be, it's on the site. The bonding attorney will of course would have to weigh in if she feels that that's, that those bond monies that can be used for that. So we are looking at that, but if they want to voice their opinion, please, Permanent School Building Committee or to Rick Norris, who will then forward it to the Permanent School Building Committee.
Thank you. Any other, other business? Counselor Baumgartner.
I know in the last 24 hours, we've been hit pretty hard with rain. Can you give an update on kind of how this town deals with pretty heavy rainstorms? I saw that the road coming from the airport was, one side of the street was blocked off.
Lucky South, no lucky, South Road is a state road, so that's the issue. For the town of Groton, usually in our flooding events, we are lucky. We have a good drainage system. We're not like some of the surrounding communities. New London has serious problems in some areas with their drainage streets flood. This last rain, we did not have that problem. We had certain areas where it did flood half of a lane or so, but we weren't, it was not the flooding that we had in 2010. We did have a, and we're getting all the details, I'll be getting more details tomorrow. The manager and myself were notified that the wastewater treatment plant at 11:30 at night, there was a discharge of treated sewage, treated, not sewage, effluent into the Fort Hill Brook. Because, excuse me, our existing pump station was maxed out. We could not pump the water that was coming in. The water that was coming in from those rainstorms, those two inches, three inches of rain are what they call inflow, they come in through the manholes. Manholes have four or five vents to vent the gas out. And if the road is flooded even a little bit, water gets into the system, gets to the plant. It was all chlorinated, it was reported to DEEP, town manager and myself, but we'll get a little bit of report. So the incident we had was there. We didn't lose any roads, we didn't lose any trees. People were moving around town. We had Pearl Street in Mystic was semi, was, as someone said, was getting up to the door of a Tesla, the car door of a Tesla, that's how deep it got. But then the tide, it was high tide, but then the tide went out and then the water flowed. So we do fairly well during those flooding events because just what our topography is and what streams and water courses we have, the drainage system is good, it's fairly new. So it handled all the stuff. So no trees down, no wires down, we were lucky with that. The systems handled the rain, went through the only hiccup we had. Even our roofs on our town buildings, they all held. We had a little bit of issue at Groton Community Center and Wing D. We do believe there may be a plug dot leader. We never had that before, but all the rest of our buildings survived, no leaks, so did really well.
Thank you.
Counselor Haiden.
For town manager John Burton, how do we go about setting up the public hearing for the Plastics ordinance? Like, could you just go through a timeline on this?
In terms of the public hearing, you just schedule the date and when posted, you'll post something in the paper, or Betsy will. You need a motion to put it on a certain date. That's all we need.
So, for example, we have a draft and we say 30 days from today, 60 days, what's the standard? 150 days?
I have to check with Betsy to see if there's a required standard. I didn't think there was on the newspaper posting, I could be wrong, so I'd want to check with Betsy.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other, other business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Haiden. All those in favor of a adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So move unanimously, we are adjourned at 9:33. Thank you very much.